When ready. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 16th meeting, excuse me, March 16th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please note first that this meeting is taking place as authorized by the governor's emergency legislation. I mean, the open meetings law to allow public officers to meet virtually. I here note that this will likely be our last meeting for some time unless this law is extended. It sunsets tonight at midnight and just speaking for myself, I look forward to seeing everybody in person again, even though this has been fun and easy in many ways. First, let me confirm that each board members alone or not with someone who's trying to influence the way you'll vote tonight, Mr. Waters.
Alone.
Ms. Wasser.
I am alone.
Vice Chair Oliver.
I am alone.
Mr. Kane.
I'm alone.
Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, John. Vice Chair Dexter.
I'm alone.
And I'm alone as well. Let us start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing. This is for the small O'Malley subdivision. The applicants are requesting approval for five lots of division located at 148 Cream Street. They get a motion to open the public hearing.
My motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Chris Oliver.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 No nays, no abstentions, and one absent. Mr. Koller, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much for having us this evening. We have a 41.39 acre parcel located on the west side of Cream Street, which is also County Road. In its current configuration, there's an existing house on this south southeastern portion of the property. And there's some open fields up and around throughout the property here. We've got some tributary to the Falk Hill that runs down through the southern portion of the property and then runs off the property. And we've got some wetlands in this area here. This area is mostly wooded for the most part. This is in the town's Green Belt zoning district and what we're proposing to do is create five new lots out of this proposal so that would result in construction of four new single-family homes. And here we go. If we get to this, here we go. All right, so here's the existing house on that southeast corner of the property. Here is a shared driveway that we're proposing. Shared driveway would come in and generally go through the areas that are have already previously been cleared. So there's very little tree removal associated with our project. This line here represents the approximate tree line taken from the ortho photo. And what we did was we ended up doing some site distance calculations and measurements out in the field using the county standards, as I mentioned earlier, this is a county road. And what we had showed previously that was part of the sketch plan was a shared driveway that served three lots, which came in somewhere in around here. And then we had an individual driveway somewhere in around here or so for this other lot, which is we're calling Lot Five. As we measured the site distance, this driveway location wanted to push up this way a little bit. And this driveway location wanted to push that way. So the entrance has started getting a little bit close and we decided that it was best if we just made it a shared driveway before. We had a previous pre-application meeting with the town and we had discussed shared driveway limitation previously and from that meeting, we talked about four lots being able to come off the shared driveway. So we went ahead and made that change. We provided an area for school bus turn, not school bus, but for cars to park for when the school bus drops anybody off in the future. We have emergency vehicle turnouts basically across from each driveway, which will help provide some areas for some vehicles to either turn off and may even provide an area for a vehicle to turn around a little bit easier. Each lot will have its own well that's indicated by these little symbols right here. And with its own sewage disposal system. We've done all the septic testing that's required and and we're gonna be actively approaching the health department for approval for the range of water supply and sewage disposal. One thing I don't have on this plan, but I'll move back to the next, the previous sheet is that we have a conservation or open space area here, which generally falls in this area back here. And it consists of seventeen and a half acres. So there's that line. Generally comes in just a little bit before that text there. So if I go back to the plan, we don't have that text, I'm sorry. But it's in generally around this area, it comes down and we'll make sure we show it on this plan. I noticed that Bonnie had asked for it to be on this plan and it should have been. It just probably was turned off on a layer. But it's seventeen and a half acres. And it's basically gonna just encompass this, this, this whole back area to remain forever green. In terms of dwelling unit density, the town's green belt requires 2.5 acres per dwelling unit. You did, you discount wetlands from that calculation. Bonnie had also mentioned in her review letter and appropriately noted that the table for proposed Lot One didn't take out the wetlands, but I believe all the wetlands were taken out for the others. So we're well above 2.5 acres per dwelling unit on all these lots, relatively low impact type of development. One other additional thing we've tried to do is we are proposing some dry wells for the rooftop runoff at least. The project will require preparation of a basic SWIP, which is erosion sediment control. But we're, we're doing some minor stormwater control by putting dry well for each of the house rooftops. And we've also provided an area for infiltration basin or infiltration trench down near the low point of the proposed driveway. So that's pretty much a good synopsis of the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Before I start with consultants, I just want to make one comment. It's a personal one, but I think the board would agree. And the Green Belt, there's a requirement that 30% of the space be maintained as open space. It actually states that it's encouraged that you leave 50%, and this is probably the first time in a long time that I've seen an applicant voluntarily offer so much open space, and this is an important area for migration of animals. So thank you to the small O'Malley family as well as to Mr. Kohler. Let me start with our consultants for comments, Mrs. Zataro.
There we go. Sorry. Yeah, I, I'm not gonna go through our whole March 14th memo, but a couple things, highlights. I think we've resolved the the four lots off the common driveway that that's acceptable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So a couple of things that we'll have to discuss as we move through the processes and I'll work with Ted on this and Dan in the Fire like District is, you know, the paving of the common driveway. But let me say first, and I think I mentioned this at the last time that they were here, is that with a common driveway, we typically require that the common driveway be built to the subbase before the chairman signs off on the plat. And the reason for that is that the first person that wants to pull a building permit is not saddled with, you know, the cost of the excavation and, you know, the subbase. So that's typically done by the developer or the applicant. So we discussed that. But the paving, you know, our town code requires that any driveway over 3% be paved for the entire length. This is one of those long, you know, driveways where you know, there are stretches of the driveway that is less than the 3%. There are stretches of the driveway that are over the 3%. So, you know, we struggled with this in the past and I think that I just need to work, you know, with Ted on this and you know, it, you know, it might come down to the fire department, you know, what they require. So you know, I know that Ted's gonna have some comments, so you know, perhaps to show, show off for some other some other comments on that and just looking through my letter. Nothing seems to be nothing, nothing seems to be too major. The only thing is, Dan, it, you know, I kind of thought that perhaps the limits of disturbance may be a little tight for, you know, people to have, you know, like amenities, if they're gonna have a pool. But again, that's up like to you guys. If, you know, you're happy with it. As I said in my memo, we'll ask for a note to be placed on the map on the limits of disturbance that says that they should be marked in the field by the surveyor at the time of the lot construction so that there's no additional you know, clearing. I mean, you know, I understand, you know, why the limits of disturbance are what they are. And if you guys are happy with them, that's fine, but I think we just want to make sure that there's that there's, you know, when people go pull out a building permit, that they say, hey, you know, it's my like property. Let's just go out and clear everything and you know, that's not what the planning boards approve. So, so we can discuss that and if, and if they're good, then we'll just require, you know, like a note on the plan. I think that's about it.
Appreciate that. I, I would just mention, if you don't mind, you know, what we did was, and I don't know if you can see the dimension I put on there, but it's, it's basically a 50-foot area around the house. And there's always that distinction, right, between when we're doing a subdivision, there's a limited disturbance in terms of soil disturbance and compaction from vehicles that are working on a house as, so you know, typically we use 50 feet around a house for that area where heavy machinery might be there, moving lumber, doing whatever they're doing to build the house. It does, we could also differentiate that with a limit of clearing where
Well, that, yes, okay, that's, that's actually, that's actually what, you know, the concern is. The, you know, the concern is the limit, you know, of clearing. And again, without looking at the exist, looking back at the existing conditions plan, you know, maybe this is all in an open area and that's not like an issue, but if it's in an area where it's got like trees, then, you know, we want to like limit that where we can. So, you know, we'll work together on that. So.
Yeah, I, I don't mind working it all together with you on that. You know, this is one area where there is some tree removal right here. So that kind of that pie shape right in through there. And, you know, we, we actually use an existing driveway through here. That's, it's not necessarily an existing driveway. It's existing path. Clearly, it's been traveled in the past. Here's the tree line here. So maybe just a little bit over in this area might go. And then this lot, lot number three, I believe that's, that's lot number four. This area here has some tree removal as well. So I'd be happy to work with you and if you have to differentiate between a limit of soil disturbance for SWIP purposes versus a limited tree clearing, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. So, you know, just a couple of other things, you know, we talked about monuments, monuments for the property line. Bonnie's probably gonna talk about monumentation for the conservation, you know, easement areas. And then the only other thing I guess was that on lot number four, there was some grading that was shown over the property line. So either you can move the driveway like a little or you'll have to just put an easement on the other lot, you know, for grading. You know, whichever, whichever that you want to do is fine.
I, I could also, you know, do a jog in the property line and
That's true. Yeah.
Be a very minor change there.
That's true.
You know, as long as you don't think that it would be something that would necessitate, you know, any input or change
No.
to planning boards.
No, that'd be fine. That'd be fine. Just change, you know, just put like a jog in it there. It's fine.
Sure.
Yep. And that's it really, at this point.
And just as a sort of point here for Mr. Kohler. One of the things we've learned from talking to realtors over the last many years is that it's actually easier for people to sell a lot that has some trees left on it instead of looking like, I'm gonna date myself, poultry guys for everything. It's just been taken down. Because people, they, they tend to prefer having instant landscaping. So if you can leave pockets of trees here and there, you know, outside the limits of clearing, as you're calling it, and disturbance, I think they'll be actually better for your clients to sell the lots. Okay, moving on, Ms. Franzen, comments?
Yes, thank you. With regard to substantive comments, I had a variety of comments. One had to do with, there was a blasting note. If there's any blasting, which you weren't anticipating, but it was noted in the plans that you would have to come back to the planning board since there isn't a blasting protocol at this point. There was a discussion that you were going to add language about maintaining foot candles and color temperature, but I didn't see that note on the plan, but it was a response to CAC.
It was site-specific note eight and I, I remember specifically telling my, asking my people to put a note also in the Indiana bat protection note here that references site-specific note eight, which is here, which talks about the half a foot candle and the 2,700 Kelvin. But, um, well, I'll, I'll definitely be able to make sure that that's a little more prevalent.
Okay.
Next to the middle.
There was a, a note that talks about the blending turtle, the suitability will be determined once weather permits and it begged the question, who was going to do this? And further, we've been discussing the fact that there's probably another wetland back there that hasn't been delineated. You know, technically, if, if that's a federal wetland, that also has to come out of the average density calculation. And while I think we all acknowledge you have plenty of land to meet the density calculation, we just don't know what that final number is because it hasn't been flagged. The other reason to be concerned about the wetland is if there are blandings turtle, we've highlighted one of the wetlands or two of the wetlands, but not that third one. So I think the planning board just has to decide, you know, ultimately how it wants it shown, if it needs it somehow delineated or if it can be shown generically, you know, based on the NWI map so that some rough calculation can be done. But that's kind of been hanging out there and I don't think a discussion or decision's been made.
Yeah, and I can, I can add a couple of things to that. So I spoke to Mike Nowicki, who's Ecological Solutions, who did the wetland delineation. He sent me an email saying there were no more wetlands than what he delineated out here. And then I ended up calling him again today because you know, I, I had responded in my response that are saying that what he said. But he said that there's not a wetland back there. You know, you would, you would have a site visit with anybody else that wanted to walk it, but he said he walked this whole area and it was not wetland. So I mean, I puts me in a, in a funny spot because it's not me to be able to say. But
Let me hop in for a moment, Dan, just to say two things. One, I think I mentioned this ages ago. I'd love to get Vice Chair Dexter and I out there again to sort of scrub up our skills of doing biodiversity assessment. See what we think and see what, if we can sort of assess first. We're not professionals, but we have been trained in this for some time. So I'd like to schedule a site visit before we exit this, this evening. And while we're not experts on wetland delineation either, I understand what you're saying when you say it's awkward, but Mike is a professional and I don't think that he would say, oh, there are no more wetlands unless he was willing to risk his reputation. So we tend to go on what experts say.
I would, I think it'd be useful.
But I mean, I, I don't know. I can get a letter from them or something. I don't know.
Maybe, Dan, what you could do is it shows up on the NWI maps. In fact, even in the archaeological report, it's showing up as a marshy area. And perhaps he could just provide a comment letter that says, you know, I was there. Maybe it's been filled. Maybe there's been post. You know, disturb, you know, there's been additional disturbances that have happened, but I think you know, just saying there weren't any more, I don't know that that's enough, I think. Especially because most of the secondary maps, if you look at an aerial, it looks like there's ponding back there. So, you know, maybe it's just, it's, it was a pond and there's no hydric vegetation. I mean, we need a little more if he's, if he's not gonna delineate it.
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll ask him to provide some more. And, you know, when you look at the topo and see that there is you know, a relatively low spot, you know, it's, it's very possible it's there. One thing I did just to give a little bit of little bit of comfort to the board was I just, I took a calculation very quickly of the area. And so this is lot four and I went right up to the wetland and went over to here. I didn't even count the pole portion. And I just took this area and it was a little over three acres. So even if this whole entire back area is wetland, we would still meet that portion. So I figured that we would be able to maybe hash out a concept today, whether it's me saying to Mike that there's no more or for all I care because we're putting it in the open space anyway. I'll show the NWI and I'll include that area too. I mean, it, it really doesn't matter to me because I feel very confident that the, the density unit per acre calculation is, is not gonna be a problem. So.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, it's, it's not a matter of, it's just that we haven't calculated it based on if it is a wetland, having subtracted it out, but I agree, it's not gonna affect the density calculation or somehow you're gonna be, you know, over in the number of lots that you're, that you're permitted. But again, and the second aspect is we're in Seeker, so you know, there was reference to blending turtles being here. So if that's a wetland, that's another one to, to take a look at.
Right. And then just to, just to touch on this one in the south, he did this A-line of flags generally along that trib that runs through here.
Right.
Didn't get it all the way to the property line, but what I did when I did my calculation was, is I, I basically kind of followed where the contour was on the flags in relation to the center line of the stream. And then I also assumed where that line would be on this end. And it came out to about one acre there. So on this lot, we are still well below on the, the density as well. So
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever we need to do to, you know, to make you guys happy about it.
Okay. Yeah, I was, it was begging the question because you didn't have the southerly border, but there was a 0.99 acre calculation. So you know, it was a little unclear how that was derived.
Yeah, I, I missed that on this one right here. That should have been taken off right there.
Did you receive anything from DEC as far as comments? Because I think we did circulate to DEC. I don't know that I've seen anything. Did, did you receive anything to further? You know, any questions with regard to blandings and the need to go out there?
I have not gotten anything. I, I don't know if Cynthia has or not. I, I know what's been happening for us and Beethman. We're getting these all the time, well after the 30 area. And it's, at that point, it's unfortunate because sometimes it raises an interesting issue, but I, I have not gotten anything that I can recall.
Okay. One of my, and you did touch upon some of the things already when you were going over your presentation. We will at some point need to see the conservation easement area definitely on several of the other sheets to make sure we're not encroaching. And we also need to, the planning board needs to agree to some kind of demarcation of that line. I know I believe Ted had mentioned and Michael had mentioned larger boulders have been used. It might be a combination of boulders and some kind of monuments, but just to allow the hall, future homeowner to know that they shouldn't go beyond a particular area when it comes to adding structures or doing, you know, disturbances, you know, for passive use, et cetera. I'm sure, you know, that's perfectly acceptable, but you just don't want to suddenly see clear cutting going on within the conservation area. So we need to demarcate it somehow.
Yeah.
And then I
The applicant has a, a machine and he likes to use it. So, you know, at some point, I think what we would do is we would
Yeah, we know.
We would probably put monuments at certain critical points where the, where the easement crosses an actual property line. Because those would be an actual survey monument, but then we could, we could probably put some sort of a limit in through here. You know, obviously we need to make sure that we're not taking down a vast amount of trees just to do that as well. So we'll have to figure that out.
Where are you with archaeology? Have they gone out and done the, the one B? Because that's kind of hanging out there for Seeker.
She was waiting for the weather to get a little bit better and, you know, we actually just did a perk test today. Not, not on this site, on a different site. So we're pleasantly happy to see that the that the, the ground wasn't too frozen anymore. So I think she's gonna be able to get out there pretty soon.
Okay. Very good.
I, I did email her. I, I just haven't heard back from her yet. So.
So hopefully in the next month or so, we'll get the archaeology and then Dan or Michael, maybe DEC will respond with regard to the blandings because I know you've had other projects where specific notes have been added in the event. There's the potential for the habitat. So we just want to close that as well. And then a lot of my other comments were housekeeping. So if, if you need, we can, we can discuss those.
Sure. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. As part of my research into whether or not you could do four driveways or four houses, sorry, office, common driveway. I went back through and read a lot of 96.9 or subdivision regs, which full confession, I hadn't read in probably six years. And there's a very specific section of code that talks about no backyards, meaning mode backyards cannot be included as part of open space. So that's why it's important that we demarcate, demarcate the boundary for the open space area because it could be that, you know, somebody in the future will say, hey, I feel like cutting all that down. And that's what I want to protect again for the migration of any animals, whether they're endangered, threatened and rare or just regular species like deer, chipmunks or critters, as Dan would say. So Ms. Moss, comments?
Yes, a couple of things. One is the driveway gets roughed in before the chairman signs. So I don't know if you can complete that grading on lot four crossing over onto probably lot five before the chairman signs so that grading is in place and then there wouldn't need to be any kind of an easement. I'm thinking that Pete might think that's a okay thing to do also. The other thing is relating to the four drives. I believe there is a requirement for filing something and having a homeowners association associated with the maintenance agreement when you go to four. I'm sorry, Victoria is not on this tonight. She sent me the sections of state law, but I didn't remember them or print them out. So I think there will be some extra steps to take to have those four combined, four accesses at one drive. What else? Is, I'm sure there's an easement map granting easement among access easements among all of the lots to the drive, no matter what lots they're on. So we'll have to, have to look at that. And I guess Pete will have to check the meets and bounds on that to make sure that's correct. And I'll have to work with checking the density assignments. And, and I'll just have to do that while you're finishing things up and, and we'll get that squared away.
Yeah, well, let me know about that HOA thing. I, I know that we are planning on having a, a shared driveway maintenance easement agreement, which is a great legal document. You know, those are the things that over time, we've learned you need to have a good document that outlines everybody's responsibilities, what they can and can't do, how much they need to pay or whatever else to make sure that the drive is maintained properly. So I, I think that that would really probably cover, cover it in terms of legality of it all. But if there is something in New York State town law or something that requires something else, just let me know.
Will do.
I was just gonna say, will do. Thank you. Let me start with my colleagues, Ms. Wasser.
Yes, thanks. My, I mean, I've, I've heard a lot in, from our professionals who have covered most of what I'd say, but I wanted to go back to something that Pete alluded to, which was saving trees. Obviously, there's been some significant clear cutting already. But I'd like, I don't know what the right diameter would be if the minimum would be 12 inches or, you know, what that number should be, but I do want to protect the trees that are there that are, you know, good size. So I'm not sure how we want to quantify it, but that was the only remark I wanted to make.
Ted, isn't it 18 inches diameter breast height or am I? Ted, isn't it eighteen inches diameter breast height, or am I, my brain gone?
I was thinking twelve.
I don't recall what the number was, um, but yeah, I don't recall.
No, I, it was, I think it was twelve and then went up to eighteen or something like that.
Yeah, it was about eighteen in the past.
So I, so are, so is Stephanie looking to have them identified and placed on the maps individually?
Yes. Thank you.
I should, I should.
He did ask for a waiver of that because there wasn't a lot of that happening, but, um, you know, I think maybe within that area of, uh, of this lot five, maybe in this area of lot four. Well, otherwise, these are already open.
Well, I, I think that's why I'm asking the question, because I noted that there was a waiver i- issue. But I'm not be inclined to grant the waiver because, exactly because so many trees have been removed already. So I think tagging them and marking them, um, on the plan would be important to me. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it.
Um, let me just insert here that I believe the code talks about isolated trees of a certain diameter breast height, not every tree in a, say, a cluster or forest. Um, so let, let's check on the code, but I agree with Stephanie. There's been so many trees removed, it would be nice to save any of the ones that are significant. Particularly as we continue to face strange global weather patterns. Um, old trees take a while to get mature. Anything else, Stephanie?
That's it, thank you.
Well, I have a suggestion quickly, uh, you know, before we, uh, before we go on to the next planning board member, that, uh, when you schedule a, a site visit, that I think it would be a, a good idea. The app, to have the applicant, um, stake maybe every hundred feet, the common, um, driveway, or every couple hundred feet, um. And then also stake, you know, the house locations, so that when we go out there in the field, we have a general idea of where everything is, and that may give you like a better idea of, you know, the tree clearing, you know, around where the house, the house and the septic are going to be.
Yeah, that's great. And then I, I think we could do that, and then we could also, uh, have the idea of where the house locations would be, and then we could also use that to parlay into locating any trees that we see that are in that area.
Right, exactly, right.
Maybe make some adjustments as we need.
Yeah, yeah.
And I agree, Pete. Um, and that's another fun thing. In the subdivision regs, it actually allows us to require that, which I hadn't known before. I thought we just did it as sort of good planning principles. So, um, this will be important for us to schedule a site visit, that means.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Waters.
Are you muted, Rob?
There you go. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I was, uh, I, I'm in agreeance with, uh, the professionals, uh, what they stated. And also what Stephanie has, uh, mentioned, uh, marking the trees. And actually Pete came up with a great suggestion and staking that out. So while you're out at the site walk, you can have an idea, a better understanding of what's, where things are placed. So that works great. Um, and then I just wanted to close, uh, at the initial workshop at the town hall, uh, you heard our concerns and you applied the thought to a lot of the concerns that we had, um, uh, and putting them on the, uh, subdivision plan. Um, and it was, uh, it's great working with applicants who accommodate what the planning board is, vision is. So I, I do appreciate that. And, uh, you were very true to what you had said, and I think going forward it'll make it that much easier. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Vice Chair Oliver?
I think my colleagues and our professionals have said a lot already, um. And I would just like to add, you know, I think the significant trees should be, should be marked to be saved. Um, but I do understand the importance of being able to have a site you can work in and, you know, navigate around those trees without damaging them. I appreciate, uh, the applicant and the changes they've made and look forward to doing a sidewalk.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Garcia.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, no comment, really. I mean, this has been pretty much covered here. Um, living on a long driveway, I can understand the issues. Um, when I built my house, I had to cross, uh, the Reggie Hill. So, um, you know, I think pretty much everything was covered here, so.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dexter.
Uh, one of the nice things about doing Zoom is I can pull up the town code and I can see that they reference isolate, isolated trees, eighteen inches in diameter. Um, within two hundred feet. Um, also, one thing we didn't mention, if there are any stone walls, I, I'm not sure how that property, um, if it had any, uh, but we do like to preserve those also. Um, but I do know it's so, it's, it's, Michael, you'll appreciate this, because I'm looking at this going, well, look at that, that there's bear hollow right behind there. But what I see is that, you know, where this is, it's almost like a plateau. It's, uh, very flat, right at the very top there, um, and then it drops off. It drops fifty, sixty or more feet as it goes down into, uh, um, the bear hollow area and the, what's that other development there behind? Yeah, so anyway, I, that's a great idea to, you know, have all that, uh, open space. And, you know, the site visit will tell us more about, you know, what natural resources are in the way. And then we'll evaluate then.
Thanks, Anne. I, I think I would also just mention that there is a stone wall that I recall that's in this area. Right, I believe it's right in around this line here. So we'll, um, as we go to have the stakeout done, we'll have him pick that up as well. Because that's the one that I'm thinking of that's on the site that isn't shown here. But there, the stone walls that are up along the property line here are shown, stone wall along Cream Street here that's shown. But I believe that there's another one internal here somewhere in around here, which will and the intent of, um, of our, of our curb entrance in, through here, was that we were gonna possibly rebuild this wall, but ba- maybe back just a little bit further where we disturb it. So that we can maintain our sight lines, but, but still kind of keep some of that natural, uh, stone wall that's in the area.
I, and I think that's a great selling point when you do that, with especially at the entrance there. It, uh, I, you know, we're known for our stone walls and, uh, you know, it, I think it would be worth it. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne. And the stone walls that delineated, you know, old farming lots, cow pastures, et cetera, are very typical of this area. And we are known for our stone walls. Anne's correct, um, there was a survey done about ten years ago by the Dutch County Tourism Agency, and the one thing that people walked away from, besides the F D R site, which was the number one element of Hyde Park, was the stone walls that line all of our roads and highways. We don't have a lot of towns that have as many as we have anymore, so it's worthwhile trying to protect them and preserve that link to history. I don't have anything else new to state. Um, most of the comments that I was going to make were made by our consultants. Um, I do just want to say that we do need to have the open space boundary shown on sheet four, so we can kind of make sure we keep seeing it over and over again. Um, if we get a letter from Mr. Nowicki, uh, sort of make stating that there were all the wetlands that he found, he flagged, and the reasons why, I think that would go a long way, but the site visit will also help us. And staking the road, we haven't done that in a, a long while, but we have before. Um, again, it's usually just like a little small stake with a pink or orange thing that has, you know, hundred, two hundred, three hundred, if it's every hundred feet. It's every fifty, it'll say one fifty, two hundred, two fifty. It's what it's best for you guys, but also siding the house will also help us. Um, and if we, we'll bring our maps with us when we go, but, um, I think it's sort of also relevant for us to walk over to where the septic systems are, et cetera, and see what the topography is. I mean, I, I know it's flat, but to see what's, what's remaining there. There's a, I think it's on the very last lot, uh, the most northern of the lots. That when I tried to, or when we tried to estimate the, um, uh, where the boundary was on this sheet, it looked like it was about maybe fifteen feet for the open space to start after the septic expansion system, I believe there. Um, so we, we want to make sure that there's nothing too close to the boundary for the open space, so it doesn't get destroyed. As Bonnie was correct to point out, the open space resource is there for people as well. It's not just for animals, but it's for passive recreation. No S, uh, no A T Vs, you know, no, uh, baseball fields, something like that. It's just for walking around in nature. Uh, and that's what our code requires. So we were prepared to adjourn this to May fourth tonight, because there's still the phase one B. We need to take a look and schedule a sidewalk before. Uh, I, again, there's no member of the public who signed up to speak. Correct? Yes. Um, but is there, would, would you guys like to get your calendars out and try to schedule a sidewalk now? Does that seem prudent? Or should I do this by email?
I think so, um.
Yeah.
And we have Tricia O'Malley.
But Saturdays work best for me.
They do for me as well. Um, tomorrow actually won't work, uh-huh, but, uh, Saturday the twenty-sixth would work. And I personally am free, uh, on the second as well. April second, in the next two weeks. I'd like to get this scheduled, scheduled for as quickly as possible, because this is been before us for a while. This, would one of those two dates work?
Was that April two? I'm sorry, was that April two?
Yes, either the following Saturday, the twenty-sixth, or April the second. We generally schedule these like around one, or if, if it was a big site, we can schedule a little bit earlier. Um, because a lot of tramping, we all have to wear.
One favor here. I just want to make sure, because I'm not the surveyor here. Um, I want to make sure that I can get him out there in time. Is it possible that you could have two dates set?
Why don't I, I tell you what, Dan, why don't you talk to the cert, talk, talk to the surveyor first, then get back to us, because you're right, everybody's busy right now. There's no reason for us to schedule a date if he don't, he can't make it.
Right, yeah, I, I wouldn't want it to be fruitless there, so I'd, I'd rather we, it's everything we need out there.
When you get to speak to your surveyor, just email me and Cynthia, and then I'll look forward to the board and figure out dates from there. Like a doodle ball.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And.
Oh, it is light at night, too.
That's what I was going to say. We could do it a little bit later if necessary.
Yeah, we can also do it after work.
So otherwise, this move, application's moving forward. I'm sorry, it's taking a little bit longer, but you're in an area that hasn't been developed before, so of course we've got to explore everything in terms of seeker. And I appreciate all our colleagues, uh, pointing out how well you've, uh, honored your commitments and cooperated with the planning board. So thank you again for that, too.
I appreciate that. And I do, I do have one more thing I wanted to discuss and, and really, it's really gauged around the concept of how we could get this done. Um, if we're able to get this shared driveway done this year. One of the critical points, obviously, is going to be the entrance here, and I just wanted to share this quickly. So this is generally the area that we measured as the best site distance for the shared driveway. And so what you'll see is we've got, you know, a couple of trees that we would want to, or would need to get out of the way here. And if we don't do it before March thirty-first, I don't know if we can, you know, we may have to wait until October. And then that ruins this whole year, and we're hoping to be able to get this done this year. Is there any way that we can get general permission just to open up just this area where the entrance is proposed right now? And, um, that way we can work this this year?
Do, do you have a D P W, uh, plan into them for the access point?
We, we, we went to meet with them, but they would not meet with us. So we actually have all the stuff on the plans and it's a matter of of them giving us a permit, so we, we will get everything to them as soon as we can, yeah.
Well, I would hate to, I, I would hate to cut the tree down and then find that they want to move it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we did the site distance measurement, so this is, we know that this is accurate. This is the accurate location where that's like distance can be met. So, uh, it's not a lot of trees. As you can see, it's a lot of kind of scrubby undergrowth over here. Uh, it'd probably be this tree right here. That would be of any concern at all, I would think.
Michael, maybe, maybe we should speak to Victoria, because we are in, we are in the midst of Secra. So normally you're not supposed to do.
Anything until Seeker's concluded, and
Right.
I was just thinking, and once we conclude Secret, if we could get a letter from D C D P W with conceptual approval, that would work. Um, but we also would need to do a site visit, because I need to see if there's rooks and roots in the trees these days. Um, just from the, this distance as far, I don't see any peeling bark. Um, but we should still at least take a look. Um, generally, Indiana and, uh, northern long-eared bats like to be at the edge of woods. The northern long-eared bats like to go inside the woods to forage, and the, uh, Indiana bats like to be on the edge, then go into clearing areas, so this maybe could be an Indiana bat tree. We'd have to take a look. Um, it, it's not really in woods, it's next to a highway and it's cleared from the other side, so I think the site visit will also help us, Dan, if that gives you any clarity.
Yeah, I was just trying to think about that March thirty-one, which is only, you know, two weeks away, so.
I was gonna, I, I was going to suggest, you know, part of the discussion with Victoria is there's some limited amount of disturbance that's allowed, provided it's related to studying the site. So, you know, if this is just to take them down, because you anticipate building a driveway, it's one thing. But if you need to get in there to check site distance, or to get equipment in for septic system testing, you know, there's some limited amount of disturbance that's allowed, but it has to be toward the study of the site and not just disturbance for disturbance toward the project. So, I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know if there's like a little line there that, you know, again, I would just encourage perhaps Michael and Victoria could talk about what's reasonable and, and.
Writing it down, don't worry.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable thought to in, to incorporate, because one of the things we said we have to do is we have, we do have to do some clearing for that site distance to fully work. What happens is, is as it comes off of Cream Street, it rises up in elevation, some two, two and a half feet or so. So when we were doing our site distance measurements, I was literally on the ground, looking which ways I needed to look. Because that's going to be basically the height of the eye of the driver, as they're trying to make that decision on whether to turn out onto the road or not. And, um, and so in order to really make sure that that is proper, there is going to be a little bit of clearance, so that could be part of that exploratory work. Um, that's necessary for the D P W. I'm not sure if they want to see that cut open at first, just to make sure that it, it does meet the, uh, the one distance that we couldn't measure fully. But it.
Pete, can you and Ted and Victoria and I all talk about this?
Yeah, I mean, I have a suggestion too. I mean, I think you could get, um, uh, Nowicki out there to take, uh, a look at the trees that would have to come down and see if they're potential uh, like bad habitat, because this is, you know, probably not going to happen by the thirty, the thirty-first. But at least if he could go look at it where you wouldn't feel like you're under like pressure. Um, in fact, um, we have a project at the town level for a sidewalk project that we're uh, a little bit, you know, behind on, and I'm going to bring in, um, uh, Mike on the town's behalf. Um, to look at some of the trees that we have to cut, because it's going to be, it's going to end up being after the thirty-first. So, um, so I think if you bring him in and just take a look at the trees that you think need to be cut, at least then you, um, may have like a comfort, um, level from him that would say either, you know, they are, well, you wouldn't have like a comfort level if he says they are habitat, but um, if they weren't like habitat, then at least you wouldn't feel, you know, the pressure of having to try to get this, you know, like done, where we, where where then we could have something from him after the March thirty-first like date that would say, hey, look, these aren't like habitat trees, at least we'd have something.
So.
That's fair. Remember, there's also the, there is a way around that. Another way, you can hire a professional who they go in the night before and make sounds, if they don't hear the correct sounds, then you can cut the next day. Um, it is, it's, it's, it, those are bat specialists, and, uh, I think they've done that, just like maybe two sites here over the years. Um, to try to get things going, because I know that, that, that bar against when you can cut trees down is significant in terms of how development can occur.
If Mr. Nowicki goes out, could you please check to see if there are wetlands? And I'm going to, can I share a squeak, a screen real quick?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. All right, hold on a second. So just so for, we understand what we're looking at. Can you see this or no?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the area I'm talking about. If you could see my cursor, the wetlands that have been flagged in here, those have been flagged. And when I turn on the NWI map, you could see how their little pockets back there. And this looks like it's standing water from this aerial, which is pretty current. This is DEC's website. So that's specifically the area I'm talking about. It's this little complex in here that's in a low point as per the topo. Yeah, so if he goes out there. Yeah, and it, it may not be that it's actually regulated. Maybe that's what Mike is saying, but it, it's still a wetland. It may just not be federally regulated. Thanks.
Yeah, maybe he thought it was isolated. I don't know. But he did say he left flags for wherever there was wetland in his opinion. So I'll
Okay.
Figure something out.
Thank you.
Anything else? So Dan, when you talk to your surveyor, then you'll get back to us and we'll come back with some dates. And in the meantime, make it a motion to adjourn the public hearing to May 4.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 May your extensions, no. We will speak to you before May 4th, but we'll see you again on May 4th. Thanks so much.
Do you want me at the, when we do schedule a site visit, do you want me to be there as well or?
It's not necessary because I'm always aware that when we're on doing these things and we have consultants, you know, the small O'Malley family is paying the bills. If they're okay with you being there, then that's fine with us, but it's not necessary. In other words, we, we know the board's been doing this long enough that we know our way around a site visit, I can assure you.
Perfect.
Particularly if it's staked, or if it's staked.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You too.
Bye, Dan.
The next item on the agenda is a content, is a new public hearing. Excuse me, I thought this was a, that's an open public hearing, sorry. It's a public hearing for a solar panel, solar panel application. This is located at 162 Cremelbo Road, titled Cranston GM PV Panels. But the owner is Jason Cranston and I believe we're represented tonight by Mr. Klingerman. Yes.
How you guys doing tonight?
We're good. Nice to meet you. So make it a motion to open the, make it a motion open the public hearing.
Us, can I make that motion?
Thank you.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May your extensions and motion carries. Mr. Klingerman, do you want to walk us through things again?
Sure, I'll start with a brief summary of the project and hoping you guys might be able to lead me kind of down the path of what you need from us. And continuums from the previous meetings and whatnot.
We will try, we will try.
I appreciate it. So we're here to talk about an 18.36 kilowatt DC 15-point kilowatt AC ground mounted solar array to serve the electrical needs for the home of Jason Cranston at 162 Cremelbo Road. The array is going to be located in what is currently kind of an offshoot from the driveway that's used as a parking area. It will no longer be used as a parking area. The customer intends to make that a green space underneath the array with some landscaping techniques, basically to turn that into a grassy area. And then he intends to use, as he put it, native plants and shrubs for screening around the northeast side of the array or the one homeowner that would have line of sight to the array potentially during the winter months due to the coniferous trees, including Forsythia. And if I'm pronouncing these wrong, I apologize.
It's okay. Don't worry about it. Don't worry.
Red trink, dogwood, sassafras, blackberry and raspberries. They will not only shield the array well, but they'll provide food and shelter for the animals as well. I know there was some technical questions that we can dig into about the size of the system and what it does and things like that. But I wanted to get right to that screening part because I know that was one of the major concerns for everybody. I did want to point out, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's okay.
Yes.
All right. Second. So did want to point out here that this is the, the location that's currently being used as a parking area. And you can see this retaining wall that's already here. Give you a different angle of it. This is kind of looking at the house toward the north. And then this is looking more toward, if you could see the neighbor's house that we're potentially screening from, it would be above that lift that's parked there. This retaining wall itself is going to screen naturally probably 80% or more of the visible components of the array from the neighbor's house. I've also taken the liberty to use some 3D Google imagery here and to look at the house and what the line of sight would be. And if you look in here, I'm not even sure. I think they may have one window on this end of the house. So if they have any other windows here that I can't see, they might be able to look out at those, but ultimately not a lot of straight sight from the, the home itself. And then come down here and look at it. It's from the house. That's the furthest vantage point. And then you get to a certain point, the array ends here. The other house, Mr. Cranston's house would potentially screen the furthest corner of the array. But again, that retaining wall, as you can see in these photos, will do most of the screening itself. And then the customer's intent to use vegetation to complete that screening is, is, you know, in full force. He's happy and willing to do that.
Before we move on, is the retaining wall shown on the site plan itself? Did I miss that?
I don't. Well, it's not something that we were a part of, so I don't think we have it shown as new construction.
No, it's just, it's, it doesn't require, I don't think, I, I don't know if it requires a building permit or not, but what I'm saying is, is I don't believe a retaining wall is shown, so we wouldn't be able to know that there was any screening provided by that. In addition, the screening is not just from the house itself, it's from the property next door. So in other words, if somebody wanders out there in their backyard, they're not supposed to have to see it in case somebody cuts trees down, whatever. But I know what you're saying. But, and when you were doing the aerial 3D, there's no pool shown right here, but I know there's a pool there. Can you show me where the pool is there? Do you know?
Well, let's take a look.
By that bar.
So. Find the page. I saw it has the pool. So we have the pool shown here on this drawing.
According to the aerial you just showed, that pool would be in, underneath trees.
Correct.
This is an old, older aerial.
Probably, probably one summer ago or something like that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think the pool just went in like last year.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so the pool is, is somewhere south and, and mostly west of this most southern structure here that's visible.
That's a full house, I believe. Yes.
Yep. So it's that treadled in this of the driveway.
So the retaining wall provides a long backyard that's level and then it drops off to this parking area where the solar panels would be.
Correct.
And I believe you, I understood you correctly. He's going to take out some of the pavement there to put in something natural, we'll call it, underneath the array.
Correct. It's not paved, so it's a stone driveway currently.
Okay.
Or the parking area is stone, I should say. Here, as you can see, it's kind of dirt.
Right back.
So he's gonna, he's gonna turn that into kind of like what you see over here behind to match that natural grassy landscape.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
That's, that's a good explanation. I feel like we have more information now than we did before. And before I call on our consultant, let me just go.
That was better than my explanation.
No, no. It's a little more detailed, that's all. But we went down a rabbit hole, as I described it last time, about kilowatt hours. And that's because our code, when, there's a distinction in our code between small solar arrays and large solar arrays. And the number that we were given was that it had to be below, I believe, the 25 kilowatt hours. But then Noel explained it and Vice Chair Dexter went further down the rabbit hole for us and found a formula that's used in the northeast in this specific area for what is, what you, the, the equipment is described as 25 kilowatt hours, but it doesn't, not every panel works completely efficiently. You have to look at the average amount of the day. So there's a factor that you apply. And then I believe in our area, it was 3.5 hours. So it actually produces less than what it sounds like when you first hear the 25 kilowatt hours. That's the layman's version I'm going to try to use for you. But it, it may be that we'll need to change our own code, that the kilowatt hour reference may need to be dropped. We'll look at that and take that to the town board if necessary. But I believe that we were all in agreement that this does qualify for the small scale solar array system.
Good. Yeah, I would, just from experience with many other towns, I've done probably 100 to 150 of these meetings in the last eight years. I've seen towns with no code to towns that have the strictest codes. And I think people are more moving toward either square footage as a, as a maximum or kilowatts AC, which gives you a little more flexibility on the number of panels, but utilities don't allow more than 25 kilowatts AC, not kilowatt hours, but kilowatts. So for a residential, so it kind of lines up with the, the state tariffs and things like that, just for informational purposes.
No, thank you. We, we actually, if you've seen, we, we were the first town in the county to adopt a code that was specific for large scale solar arrays, solar farms. And that was because otherwise you had to go through the entire site plan process with, for public utility. It seemed easier to tailor something and we revised that since. And I think when we revised it, we made stronger distinctions, but we didn't have the most up-to-date language for these residential applications. So I appreciate you sharing your knowledge on that one. Eight years is solid, trust me. So let me start with our consultants. Mr. Sotero, anything? Are you even on this?
I don't have any comments on the solar application, but I was looking at the retaining wall. If the applicant could, could go back to the picture. The house, the house in the, the, the background, is that the neighbor's house?
No, that is the homeowner for this project.
Right, because usually a retaining wall over four feet in height does like require designed by a state professional engineer. I don't know the height to this, but it looks like it's well over four feet. So I don't know if Tad will have any comments on that, but I know it has nothing to do with the solar application, but it raises another question. It looks like it's a combination of like boulders on the bottom and possibly like gabions on the top. So you know, I'll be anxious, not anxious, but I'll be curious to see, you know, like what Tad says, but I think there needs to be, you know, an engineer that needs to go look at that wall. But that's my only comment.
Thank you, Pete. I was, I, when I saw the wall, I thought the same thing.
And, and like typically, I mean, that, you know, that height wall, there should be, there should be something on the top to prevent people from, you know, going over the top of it or like kids, kids, kids that are running around or, so.
Yeah, you know, I'm not familiar with the project.
No, I know that.
Regarding the retaining wall.
I understand.
Look like they're adding more to the top too, that might actually prevent somebody from running off of it. It looks like it's above the grade behind it, but.
Yeah, okay.
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Yep.
Plus, this is an optical illusion. You can see the height of the wall based on the two human figures behind. He seemed to be standing pretty, pretty darn close. Ms. France, any comments?
I, I really don't have comments on the application. I would just actually confirm what Mr. Klingerman's saying. When you talk about it being measured in AC and in square foot, that's really the recommendation from the solar guidebook that Nicerda came out with. And so that's why we're seeing that language in different zoning regulations and that guidebook came out more recently. So it'd be useful, you know, at some point in time, if the town wants to look at the zoning again, that they consider Nicerda's model law. But other than that, I, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Bonnie, the code changes, the planning board chair is under our code. Not just allowed, but encouraged to, if we find errors, to make a presentation to the town board about what the error is. And I'm thinking this might be a good one for you and I to pal up. We don't want it, we don't want to have, we want to encourage residential applications that are using solar, solar power. We want to encourage them. And if we keep having language that's dated and not right, then we need to rethink it. That, that's all. So thank you. And thanks for reading the code. You went down the same rabbit hole, Bonnie. I know.
Thank you.
Most comments?
Yes, as Pete said, that the retaining wall over four feet tall needs an engineer to address the wall. And the other thing is the placement of the panels in what was a parking area. That there's a driveway that continues around that area and, and passes to the south. Hopefully there will be some kind of protection on that, let's see, southwest corner of the panel array. Because it looks like it bumps out into that driveway a little bit where the placement of the panels are.
So you mean some kind of physical protection for the array itself?
Yeah, so that nobody runs a vehicle into that corner of the array.
Or remember Waters had asked for a dimension from the, I guess I'll call it the southwest side of the driveway there to the southwest corner of the array to see how many cars could fit by. That's one of the ones we were missing that we talked about needing to have measurements.
Understood. I will say the previous presenter and project is a much larger value that enables them to use a lot more engineering skills and do a lot more detailed plans than a, a small project like this. So apologies for the lack in detail.
No, no, it's probably just confusion. We were just, it's, it's a safety issue.
Yeah. Yep, understood. So I do believe that the way you see this right here, using the AutoCAD, my design team has put basically the dimension of, as if the panels were laying flat. They're actually going to be at 28 degrees and they're going to be pushed back as far as physically possible with that wall. And so the north to south dimension that you're seeing in this two-dimensional piece of paper is slightly skewed by, you know, the tangent of 28 to zero there. But, you know, I, I can figure out what that dimension is going to be for you guys to the other side of the driveway, but I have a feeling just by looking at the photos and everything, it's going to be probably more than 15 feet. So more than enough for a vehicle to, to be safe. And you know, if need be, you know, a couple of bollards or something like that could be installed as part of the project.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Let me start with my colleague, Mr. Waters.
Yes, it was, it was, that, that was my big thing was the measurement from that, that corner to the edge of the driveway, which is that line there. I, I roughly scaled it. It looks like it's about 15 feet. And that's not taking into consideration, I guess, if you're going to be moving it back to the wall. But I, I wasn't exactly sure what the, you know, what it, it, it's very hard to scale that drawing, so.
Just using rough Google measurements, I really don't think we're going to stick out much further than where my cursor is right now. And that's showing me roughly 24 feet. So I have a feeling it's going to exceed 15 feet by a good clip, but I think, you know, 15 at a minimum is acceptable as far as the, the width of the driveway and I think we'll exceed that.
I, I just don't know what the terrain was, if that's, if that's a slope driveway, if you're going downhill, if it's icy, if they drive down in the winter, whatever, you can clip that corner very easily. It was just more of a safety issue. I, you know, I'm sure he could even widen that drive, you know, it's, it looks like it's creeping out anyway with the stone dust. So, but I, you know, I don't know the answers.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the driveway itself is actually paved. So just the parking area is not.
Okay.
So I think that that area will be, you know, as safe as possible to drive and it's probably maintained to the extent it needs it to be. But again, the bollards for safety is yeah, pretty easy, pretty easy addition. It doesn't impact the project in a substantial way.
No, that would work. Yep. That's all I had.
Thank you, Rob, because safety is an important consideration. Before I call the next board member, Nick, can you tell me, now that I've seen the retaining wall, how you're going to, where you're going to trench the line to, from the solar array to the house?
Sure. So you can see the, kind of the end of the retaining wall here. Yep. So we'll be coming around uh, here and then getting up to this higher grade as shown.
That's what I thought. So it just goes around.
Yep. So we're going to kind of go right around the uh, retaining wall and then get up onto that higher grade and a crossover and come into the back of the house over here. And uh, the utility meters and everything are located up on the front of the house. So we'll have, you know, some conduit and things like that going through the basement and whatnot, but.
Okay, thank you. Um, Stephanie, Ms. Wasser, comments?
Uh, no, I think all the questions I had, you know, and the issues have been addressed already.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Oliver?
I have uh, nothing else to add for this.
Mr. Griscio?
No comment.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
Everything's been covered.
So, thank you. And so um, Mr. Klingerman, what we need to do, so landscaping needs to be shown on a plan before we can sign it. I mean, I could close the public hearing. And we can't do that quite yet, but we could make it a condition that you show it, but the condition would need to be approved by someone. So um, he needs to, Mr. Cranston needs to add to your site plan where he intends to put, like if it's in that clearing next door or where exactly he wants to put uh, the native species that included, I read, I heard correctly red twig dogwood and forsythia and a few other things. So that just needs to be shown and labeled, uh, because Tad has to, has to see before they can get their CO that's actually been installed. So that should be shown there and um, obviously, when you're saying it's a small job and you can't, are you tilting the the array a little bit? Is that what you were saying? So it fits more snugly inside the retaining wall? Is that it?
Yeah, so. Okay, the, I think my designers were, you know, they're, they had the, they used the imagery to form the existing lines of the driveway and the retaining wall, and then they pushed this flat concept of the array, if you will, up against as close to that corner as possible. But in reality, it's going to have about a twenty-eight degree tilt and the nearest post is actually about four and a half to five feet in from the north and the east each direction. Uh, so the array will actually be able to push and overhang that. Um, depending on the the final height of that retaining wall, now that I see that's uh, that was in construction there in sight visit, we're going to have to take a look at that ourselves. But um, we should be able to go over that. I believe the height of this, and it's actually on the plans, but I'm just going to verify it with you guys here, hundred and forty-nine and a quarter inches. Uh, so that's twelve foot, five and a quarter, and that's to the very tip-top of the highest edge of the panels. Um, and down here at the leading, the lower leading edge, south leading edge height, uh, thirty inches. So as you can see, that twenty-eight degree tilt here, you can imagine kind of the retaining wall being tucked into that area right there underneath the overhang of the panels.
I, now that I understand it's got tilted on its axis by twenty-eight degrees, so it fits again more snugly behind there. I think I understand now why that retaining wall is there as well. It screens this from Mr. Cranston's from the house, et cetera, as well. On his own personal house, because I'm going to guess the retaining wall is tall enough that he wouldn't really see it. So it makes lots of sense. Um, can you uh, show, can you at, show an addition of where the plants will be? I think, I think Jason can just write it on there. I mean, Ted, is that acceptable just to write something on the plan? To show like Xs instead of trying to put it on through CAD?
I can, I can have it put in with CAD. I just need to get with the customer to get some more information. He told me what he wants to do and that he's willing to do it and happy to do it. Uh, I didn't think to say exactly what you want to do, so I'll have that conversation with him and we can make those additions.
Again, it's because when Tad, to check before the C gives a CO, she has to make sure that everything that we approved has been installed, or if it's not a big, a too big a change, that you can have minor field changes with planting, but she needed to make sure that it still had the same height and degree of opacity, stuff like that. So it just makes it easier down the line for your, your, your client. And if you can get that, we're going to adjourn the public hearing tonight to April sixth. If you, we have an extra, we normally meet every two weeks, but there's an extra week in there this time, so if we could get something to us, like even before April first, this isn't that big a deal, but I think we could consider closing the public hearing that night. And that night we could take action because we won't be meeting remotely, so we don't have to wait seven days for to to hear other public comment. Does that help?
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions? Pete and Tad, make call, yes.
Yeah, my, my, you know, that that's going, one thing to um, for the engineer of the uh, the panels here to to talk to the homeowner about is if that's pushed back to that retaining wall, you, the height of the retaining wall might be at the height of those panels. So if there's not some kind of a barrier there, people could actually slide down that the panels. I mean, you can walk right off into the oblivion there.
Yeah, that's what we talked about before with the wall.
Right, right. So, so, but now that I, now that it's being tucked and pulled back even further, now you actually have a ramp, basically.
Yeah. I'll definitely dig in uh, with the customer to find out a, what the actual height and and dimensions of that um, wall are now, and I'll actually bring up the uh, you know, the access restraint there as well. Um, depending on the height of it and accessibility to it, you know, bring it back to you guys and we can talk about it. But yeah, we'll definitely put some good consideration into that before the next time we talk.
Um, I, um, quickly, uh, before we go, Tad, um, you know, assuming the wall is over four feet, does that require a building permit?
I don't know.
That's a heck of an answer, okay? Well, we'll find out. All right.
I believe, Pete, I believe that we encountered a sort of similar situation before over uh, in um, Heather Glen. I believe it's, there's a certain distance if it goes every four feet or something, and if it's load-bearing, then it requires a building permit. This is a different situation. That was going downhill. This appears to be just lining a flat piece, so I guess we can talk to Don.
Yeah, we'll check it out. We'll check it out.
Okay. Thank you, and um, Nick, we'll see you uh, in three weeks. If you need anything, just reach out to us. Uh, Cynthia and me, I will convey it, we'll answer questions. Don't worry, we we're here to help. Uh, we just kind of got off to a a rocky start last time, so I appreciate you, you're adding clarity to the situation. And uh, yes.
Did we want to adjourn the public hearing to?
Yes, I'm 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 waiting, I I was waiting to actually say, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, to April sixth.
I'll make that motion.
Second that motion, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both again. And I guess, I said, just contact us if there's any questions you have, okay?
Will do. Thanks very much for all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is Wasser. Uh, this is a similar situation. This is located eleven Nicrus Lane, but this is actually an expansion of an existing solar array there. Stephanie Wasser is a board member who is stepping down and recusing herself for this particular application. And John Kane, one of our alternates, is here tonight, who is subbing in. It's a very low, uh, not, not a controversial application, John, so I appreciate you being here for workshop and for this one too. Um, as a reward, I think I assigned you to read the resolutions. At any rate, um, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Uh, okay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Rob Waters.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any intentions, the motion carries? And no one signed up for this for public hearing? Let me just, the same comment about our law about requiring twenty-five kilowatt hours probably needs to be adjusted and look at square footage uh, or kilowatt AC uh, measurements instead. So does anybody have any comments about this application? Has it already had screening? Yeah, I didn't think so. No comments?
There's so many pages left.
Ted, is that you we're hearing?
Okay.
Okay. So if there's no comments, then we we can't take action tonight because we're still meeting remotely and need to wait seven days. So it looks as though we'll, we'll schedule this for action on April sixth. So make a motion to close the public hearing.
Rob Waters makes that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, and I'll note that this is with the exception of seven days for written comments in case there still are any. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Don, thank you for staying here for just voting very simply, but I am going to, and on April sixth, I'm going to give you the resolution to read it, if that's okay.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you then April sixth, everybody. Thanks again. And uh, Mr. Flynn, uh, it's uh, and there was very little for you to do, sorry, but I hope that's good news.
Great, man. Thank you to the board. Good to take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, we're out of public hearing now. The next item is a workshop. This will be a matter of first impression for for most of the board. Application is styled Hyde Park Quick Stop. Mr. Petra, Petrella is here tonight. It's good to see you again. We always like working with your firm. It's exciting. Um, and so this is basically involving the uh, demolition and reconstruction of a convenience store and fuel station located at forty-nine, twelve Albany Post Road. This will be just south of um, the veterinary clinic owned by Howard Minser and formerly Statsburg Storage, which by the way, Tad, I, when I drove by the other day, it's now got a new name, I think KO Storage.
I saw that.
I'll have to contact, I'll have to contact, not to see if he sold it, but yes, it just got slipped in there and it's the same colors and everything else, like, but.
I saw that today.
At any rate, so um, this is located nearby and Brendan, let me trade over to you, sorry.
Excellent. No, you were doing fine if you want to keep going.
I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the plan prepared for me.
Ah, okay.
Sharing.
I will share my screen here. One moment. Okay. All right, are we up?
It started, but we can't see any, yeah, we, yep, we can.
Good, okay. So uh, as uh, the chairman mentioned, we are just south of both of it, the animal hospital and the self-storage building. Our site is located here directly east of the Anderson Center. Um, to the south, we have some wetlands and to our east, we have some privately-owned uh, undeveloped commercial properties, I'll call them, and a small stream that runs back here as well. Um, little bit more of a zoomed in here look. Go to the next page. Went, went too many. So here we are zoomed in onto the site. Um, you can see where there's some existing parking areas here. There's a kind of a very large, completely open curb cut that runs the entire length of the property right now. Uh, there are some storage areas, I'll call them, on the east side of the property. This is the main convenience store, and here on the very west end of the property, there are two fuel pumps and a diesel pump. The existing underground storage tanks are located here on the south side of the site. Um, I will point out later that they are within the one-hundred-foot wetland buffer, which kind of curves right here across the bottom of the property. Just south of that, and these property lines aren't exact, as I'm sure you know, the property is probably more about right here. Just south, we have, there's another access um, that gets to the landlocked parcel that's up here in our northeast corner. So that's kind of the existing condition. Um, the next sheet that we have here is just sort of a, a, a view of the uh, the existing building and the pumps, kind of what I just described. You can see there's just that in one long, large, paved curb cut. To the right here, you'll see this is where the storage tanks are currently. Um, again, in the wetland buffer, and then you can see our existing building here. It's just uh, it it honestly has reached kind of its useful lifespan. Uh, there's going into the building and around the building, there's a lot of things that need to be corrected, which is why our project is not so much to correct it, but to reconstruct it. Um, just looking at the fuel pumps, obviously, you know, he just doesn't have modern conveniences and or safety measures. There's no canopy with fire suppression. There's no slab that retains spillage. There's just a lot of things that need to be updated, so that's why we're going to full rebuild on this project. So now this next sheet, and I apologize, I'm going to rotate you a little bit, left will now be north as opposed to up and obviously south will be to the right. So our project proposes again to reconstruct the entire facility from the ground up, improve general access through the site and to um, also just generally improve the, the, the nature of the site. Um, so I'll start with, our first goal was one to get those underground storage tanks. If you can see here is a small dotted line, this is our wetland buffer. Those storage tanks are located right here. Uh, our first goal was to move all of the fuel uh, as as much as we could away from not just the wetlands, but the stream to the east. And the other thing I'll point out, which I didn't touch on, was this particular parcel also conveys stormwater from a lot of the northern parcels. It actually collects here in the northeast, there's a small retention basin that exists now in an underground culvert that runs along the east end of our property and then allows that stormwater to continue down into the wetlands. So our objective was to just protect as much of that existing stormwater conveyance and wetlands as possible. So we started with bringing the fuel systems here to the western side of the property. So our primary canopy building and fuel pumps are located here. We have four new stations. Um, we then have located the underground storage tanks onto the very edge of the western piece of the property. We've put that behind, um, that, that whole canopy is now behind a large um, landscaped lawn and tree buffer, and now we've reduced it to two inlets and and outlets. So you know, now we don't have this large curb cut that doesn't control traffic. From there, we have our thirty-one, a hundred and fifty square foot convenience store that we've put to the rear of the property because we felt that that was the least impact on any of these stormwater measures. Um, and then from there, we have parking located here on the southern and eastern sides of that building. Now, the location on the parking was thought that since we have the access aisles for the pumps located around here on the front, that the parking would be situated along those access aisles so that we didn't duplicate paved areas because we're on a very compact site. We're about three-quarters of an acre. Um, it also then gave us a nice clear area free from the two building structures to have our new septic system built. So we put our primary septic system up here on the north side of the site with our expansion getting closer to the wetland area, but again, outside of that buffer. Um, one, the other feature of this is that we do relocate the diesel pump here to the north. Now, the reasoning for the diesel pump being moved to the north and not in uh, with the rest of the canopy structure is that you generally diesel vehicles can be larger and we wanted to be able to facilitate the use of a tractor trailer or any other vehicle that needs diesel through the site. Now, that vehicle in general has a much larger turning radius, so in order to allow them to come into the site and exit the site, we have a one-way access drive that can hit this diesel and then come out of the site. This is successful, I think, for two reasons. One, it eliminates that cross-traffic with larger vehicles with general populous traffic. You having pedestrians moving from a pump towards the building. The other thing that it does is it actually gives us, the code requires that any deliveries or access aisles be located to the rear of the site. Well, this actually performs that same thing here. This will be where he'll just get his deliveries and service vehicles can come to the rear of the building. Um, so that kind of gives you an overall look of the site. We, it also has some additional amenities. Um, you know, we now have an enclosed dumpster enclosure as opposed to the dumpsters just sitting out there in a large paved vacant area. Um, we are planning on lawn and landscaping the entire perimeter of the facility along with that one island that I discussed with you, and then there's several interior um, planted landscape islands in the parking areas. I'm going to jump now to sort of the proposed exterior looks of the building. So this top building that you see here would be the convenience located at the rear of the property. Um, and this is a kind of a modern colonial-style-looking building, hip roof, architectural asphalt shingles. Um, we have a couple of dormers here located in the front. We also have a large shed dormer because this convenience store will actually have on the second floor some of his operating office space. So that's how we're going to fit that into this structure and still maintain a good high ceiling in the convenience store. Um, across the front, we're fiber cement siding. We have a two-tone color scheme. Um, across the bottom, it would be a cultured stone veneer base along with some piers, some architecturally trimmed columns, uh, some white um, storefront framing and uh, entrance doors here with a canopy entrance. Um, again, this is the rear of that structure, so you can see the shed that I was talking about, the shed dormer. Um, and then this would be the side, and again, you can see the canopy is coming here, the two dormers, and then that same facade running the entire perimeter of the building. Uh, I'm going to zoom in a little bit here because this one's a little bit difficult to see. So this would be the fuel station canopy building. Um, we're going to follow sort of the same static, so we have a hip roof. And in order to add some decoration and some um, just basically to modulate that facility, uh, facade a little bit more and dress it up, we've added some shed dormers off the top and we've added some accent metal roofing uh, to accentuate those. Across the entire perimeter of that, we've got some fiber cement paneling that we've now uh, sort of cased out so that you get a um, you know, again, colonial sort of paneled look to it as opposed to. you know, again, colonial sort of paneled look to it as opposed to just siding or some other material, give it a little bit more more of a feature, I think. Um, again, so now you have the side view of that. So it's just a little bit more of the same. This project does include an application to the zoning board. We will be seeking three variances. Those three variances are that we first thing is the underground storage tanks. Go back one page here. In order to get those again, as far away from the wetlands as we could, we've located those actually in our front yard. They are classified as a structure, as I understand it. So they do actually are need to be within the yard. But our feeling is that, you know, this gets them as far away from the wetlands as possible. And they're under the visual problem. They affect the project in any negative manner. And it still again keeps the building, the canopy building is close to the front as the code would like. And it also keeps, you know, the parking areas and all that set back away from the road. The other zoning board variance that we would need is scale. Because we're sort of a two-building facility, the convenience store and the canopy. And on such a small site, it just, it really kind of added up and having that canopy as well, which again is required. I mean, you need the fire suppression over the pumps. There's just unfortunately, you know, no way of getting around that. It's not just a convenience for for the users. So that that extra twenty eight hundred square feet, I think it is, just really kind of throws us off on that scale. And then lastly, is coverage and that again comes down to providing safe travel pass, vehicular travel pass, pedestrian travel pass through the site. We end up with a little bit more paved area than it would be permitted, which is seventy percent on the site. But again, we're three quarters of an acre and we're at eighty percent. So I felt like we were fairly efficient in the layout and trying to reduce that as much as possible. Other than that, I think that's a pretty brief rundown of the project and I'll leave it to the board.
Mr. Petrella, you did not disappoint. So I said, I like working with your firm at all the time. The presentation was succinct and also I I I wish we could do a double photo to show what you're proposing versus what's there right now. You were polite when it said that it's in it's reached the end of its useful life. It certainly it's reached the end of its aesthetic life. And we do need to have more modern safety protocols installed, including the canopy, et cetera. I want to address one thing real quickly. I talked to Ted about this as well as to the applicants representatives. The so under our code, a structure is defined as anything with a static assembly with walls and a roof, et cetera, or columns. So the canopy fits that that kind of a structure. Under the definition of a building, a building is any structure in which is built amongst other things provide shelter from. So when you're underneath the canopy getting gas, if it's raining, you're seeking shelter. It's also providing safety. So under our code, what I'm trying to say is the canopy turns out to be a building. It may not be a building in the traditional sense, like you see the traditional building behind it. But it is a building. And so our code requires that the building be moved as front to the close to the front of property line as possible. And that all parking should be to the rear of the front of the frontline of the building. In this instance, if you consider parking while you're temporary parking while you're fueling up, it would be to the rear of the frontline of the fuel canopy building. And after that, even though the second building is behind it, the first building is what you do to pay attention to. So long the story, one long version of what I'm trying to say is that this does meet the technical requirements of the code to the parking behind the frontline of the building as the way it's defined. Next thing I'll point out is this is a very attractive building. And then just before I call on my consultants and my colleagues, two question or one comment, one question. Brendan, the the shed dormers on the canopy. I know it's to provide visual interest, as you said, but that's not meant for signage as well, is it?
No, we're not proposing any signage. I probably should have touched on that. Thank you.
It's okay.
The only place that we were anticipating signage at this point with the application and we're still working with the owner on what that signage will be, but was going to be this portion here. And then we have a monument sign located in the northwest corner.
I noticed it didn't have names or signage yet, so I figured Hyde Park Quick Stop might not be the final name.
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah. The other comment I have, and it's just me specifically, but I'm going to bring up something as well from a colleague who's no longer on the board with us, but that's a really attractive light pole. I have to say that you put it that you're putting there. The light poles are there. We don't see those always out here in the interlands. It's very attractive, but just one comment. Can you paint the base black so that it matches the color of the pole instead of being cement when it sticks out? That's for Diane Denapoli. Let me start with our consultant.
We can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Ms. Franson.
I I did get out some real quick preliminary comments. And some of these came from the informal discussions we've had with some planning board members. One is, is there any kind of easement along the southerly property boundary, which requires that you keep that available to the back property? Because right now we show that you're going to have a curb and then landscaping, but I guess the landscaping is going to sort of end at the property line. But beyond the property line, you have some more grass in this gravelly drive to the back. So sort of what's happening in that area?
So we actually, we did look into that a little bit more. We found no easement on our property. But what we did was we plotted the existing gravel driveway and it's just off the edge of our our property line. So we don't have a plan necessarily to do any work beyond our property line. So we wouldn't be touching that again, since we're not really affecting their ingress. We would be, you know, curbing out in the DOT right away and we would probably do some taper curbing and stop at their, you know, entrance to their driveway. We're open to suggestions if you feel like there should be some delineation at our property line. But obviously, you know, we we don't intend on doing any work on on our neighbor's property itself.
And I think it's just understanding the rights of and what needs to be sort of protected there. And also you do have like snow storage areas. You are going to be grading because you have some drainage there and kind of understanding where that that property line is. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the MB zone has a standard incorporating small landscape front yard shall be encouraged with any residential, non-residential or commercial use. And you do have these little landscape areas on either side of the you know, on on either side of sort of the northern, the southerly property line in the front. But that area that's going to be landscaped actually looks like it's outside of the property boundary. So it's in the New York State DOT right away. And you know, to what extent can we rely on DOT, you know, allowing that to be there and not necessarily requiring in the future that it be removed, et cetera? Because really the intent was to put the, you know, the front yard. That's where the landscaping is going to go. But I know you're kind of restricted on this site. So if you could speak to that.
Yeah, that that was a concern. As you can see, we don't have nearly the amount of landscaping that I would have liked to have given you in that for strictly that reason. We were concerned that the DOT one would not allow it to how that would get maintained is another question. I can't speak to whether the DOT is going to fight with us on the street, the shade trees that we have sort of in the front there. Our hope is that during their review that they'll be fine with that. But again, and you sort of pointed it out, it this is a very compact site and it's it's very difficult to get our a an additional yard in in the front of that building when we've already kind of given every vehicular path and sort of minimized it to what is basically code allowed. You know, I mean, all of our aisles are pretty much at the minimum for code allowance. So we're just kind of trying to do our best. As you mentioned, one of the things we picked up was those north and south entrances, try to get those a little beautification there. But I can't promise that in the future, the DOT wouldn't or could ask to change those plantings in in the front.
Okay, yeah, it'll be great to have consultation, obviously, early to to know what they'll even allow. I'm glad you mentioned the second floor because one of my questions was, is that habitable space and was it going to be occupied? So that actually is a a habitable space that's going to be for use for offices for the facility. That the canopy canopy area, and again, just by virtue of the site, it's it's kind of narrow at thirty feet. And so you can have one really vehicle by each of the pumps. Do you expect or have you had any experience or looked at the site from a queuing perspective? If someone wants to queue behind one of these, you know, vehicle at a pump, is it a problem in terms of the circulation? Do you anticipate any issues?
I don't. It's hard to determine that once this is expanded, the amount of volume that he'll get. We know what he gets now. This is more than sufficient, obviously, because he only has two pumps. It is designed so that you can come into the site. You can easily come into the site. And even if somebody were to stop here and get that one car queued, you can then progress around the site and continue to queue around it. So because we have the ability of accessing it from different directions, we do have the ability to have a couple of cars in queue while we're seating the eight other customers.
Okay. Um, one of the things that was picked up is the lighting levels underneath the canopy seem high. At points, they're they're over twenty foot candles. And I did, you'll know, you know, in general, illumination levels of ten foot candles at a canopy are adequate. So we also want to make sure that the lighting is recessed. It looked like from the design it would be, but we obviously don't want them popping out from the canopy. They should be up into the canopy, but also to examine whether those light levels can be brought down and and to just confirm what the Kelvin values are because the town's been trying to stay at three thousand or less to have a warmer appearance. And then just in terms of elevations, I had some comments that were again discussed informally. One is, is there a south elevation? I think we had the northeast, west, but I don't know if we had a south elevation for the building. There was a question whether the stone could be extended across the facade rather than having the plate glass go to the bottom. That was one question. Can muntens be added to create sort of this multiple multiple pane appearance in the glass? There was a discussion a little about how sometimes windows and gas stations end up being a repository for many, many signs, which there are, I think, regulations. Ted could speak to that in terms of how much window area you're allowed. But you know, that might help a little bit. We talked about the canopy lights being recessed. And in general, we also talked about they're they're usually in the canopy, I guess, these various devices that come down out of the, you know, the ceiling of the canopy, which we would probably expect. And does the design of the canopy actually come down to sort of help screen that or, you know, would that be visible? Those are just some, again, general comments, informal comments about the design.
Yeah, I I will touch a little bit on the pertinences that you see that come down from that. Mostly those aren't screened because all those things that you're seeing come down are actually fire suppression devices. So you don't really screen them because you may possibly block what they're trying to spray. So you will see those, but typically you will only find those directly or just to the side of the pumps themselves. So we, again, we did, we're considering recessed lighting, but as far as the suppression goes, there's very specific heights that the nozzles have to be at. So we don't want to lower the canopy, obviously, and then we don't want to, I can't promise you that they'll all be screened because they that is a completely separate code and those little nozzles have to meet down to those heights in those directions.
Right, we we weren't sure if the face of the canopy, if it actually kind of extended below the, you know, the ceiling of the canopy based on the design. That's that's what we meant in terms of potentially screening it or if or if that's flat to the ceiling.
Like a tray ceiling, like a tray ceiling that's up.
Yeah.
So that the canopy extends down past it.
I think we can look into that. I don't think I don't have any objections to it, you know, as long as we are not creating any sort of issue with the suppression system. I think we could do that. Absolutely. And that would also help your concern too with any kind of flare coming from the recessed lights from the canopy itself.
Thank you. Those are highlights. There are other comments. I did send them to your office and again, preliminary comments from some of the preliminary discussions we've had. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Mr. Zataro.
Uh, yeah, um, you know, thank you. I, as I said in my memo, this is going to be a huge improvement to this area. And, you know, just from an engineer, you guys did an awesome job as far as the elevations in the canopy, you know, like really, really nice.
Thank you.
So uh, you know, we did issue a comment memo, some minor things. I'll talk a little bit about, you know, the drainage. I did get an email from the applicant's engineer. Yes, well, a voicemail and an email today. So you know, you had mentioned that there is a existing stormwater pipe that runs from the north through your site and discharges to the wetland to the south. So I didn't put it in my memo, but after reading the email from the engineer today, one of my comments was what was what was the condition of the pipe from your site to the discharge to the wetland area? And the engineer, you know, like had stated that, well, that's not really on our property. Well, there's going to need to be an easement on that, that you're going to have to get from the adjoining property owner because if there's not, if there's not already one. But all all of the, all of this project's drainage is tapped into that pipe. And if there's, you know, it's I'm sure it's an old, it's an old corrugated metal pipe. If there was ever a clog or a collapse from your site to the wetland, you have to be able to go in, you know, and maintain it and assuming that you would not assuming that when you get an easement, I would recommend that the pipe from your site to the the wetland area be replaced so that it's all that's completely a brand new system. And I'm sure that your DEC, because you're going to require a DEC permit that that might also be one of their like questions. We'll have to talk to the planning board attorney. I don't know if there needs to be any easement language to make sure that the flow from the north is able to be continued through your site. I mean, it probably has been for years, so it may be grandfathered in. But again, you know, we'll discuss that with her. So need to need to take a look at the outlet pipe from your site to the wetland area. And then we will need a pre and post-development analysis to make sure that there's not going to be an increase in flow to the wetland. And again, I think that the DEC would be interested in that. This project only requires an erosion sediment control permit because it's not over an acre, so we don't need a formal SWIP. However, I would take, I would like to take a look at being that this still is qualified as a hotspot under the DEC regs. There were one or two oil and water separators that were proposed. But I would like to see if we could look at a little bit better enhanced treatment unit. So I could work with your engineers on that. We've, our office has worked on several, on the developer side with several gas station project where where we have, you know, like incorporated some enhanced treatment units here. And I think, you know, again, that may be something that the DEC is interested in too. So not really too many engineering comments. Most have to do, you know, with drainage. And I'm just looking through here quick. You talked about, you know, the concrete slab under for, you know, the pumps. I assume that'll have other grooves in it to control, you know, spillage. And that's pretty much it. We had a couple of small comments, but I'll work with your engineer on that and you know, we'll resolve it, but really nice project, you know, really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Ms. Moss, comments?
Yes, I you are taking the tanks out of that DEC adjacent area. You are reconstructing elements within that and Pete was referring to a DEC permit that would be needed or just are you anticipating that that redevelopment within that one hundred foot adjacent area will need something from DEC?
Yes, I I do think of that. Yeah.
Okay. Another item, typically gas stations have outdoor storage of items that are for sale or propane tanks that you can exchange, that kind of stuff that would need to be shown. Bundles of wood is another typical thing. Bundles of wood is another typical thing or an ice machine. I think he has an ice machine there now. So those all, those all would need to be shown. The, particularly the propane, because you'll probably need some kind of barrier to keep cars from some, some bollards or something. Okay, there it is.
Yeah, so you have the propane exchange, but you do bring up a good point about the wood and the ice. I want to make sure I touch base with him on that one as well.
Okay, the driveway to the south where there is no fence. There's actually not a fence required because it is another commercial use. Around the back, also, there is not a fence required because that is still a neighborhood business district parcel as is the one to the north. So it would be up to, up to the owner whether or not he wanted to provide some screening or fencing. What else? I guess Pete covered the the hotspot. We look forward to seeing the signage. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
And before I leave your, your comments, are you referring to maybe needing a, a wall along the southern boundary of the property? So cars entering in to go back to the rear property and the landlocked parcel would not be driving on their property? Is that what you mean?
Yes, they would not be driving on a undefined grassy area that's used for some kind of storage, snow storage. That's all. You know, I don't know whether there needs to be some kind of a curbing or a lining with smaller rocks or I'm just concerned that that area that is not contained will it become part of a driveway.
No longer grass. Yeah, almost becoming hard packed and basically impervious. Okay.
You know, maybe that's okay. Maybe you do railroad ties. I I don't know, but I think there should be some kind of a, of a definition along there.
Yeah, I I think that's a great point and we'll discuss it with the owner. And I think that we can certainly come up with something that is visually appealing, but does enough of a job without becoming a true fence them from driving on the, on the, the grass and seeded areas. I I think it's a great point.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Dexter, do you mind if I call on you first?
Um, Michael, if I could just mention a couple of things before we go on to planning board members, please. Thanks. So, um, one thing I should have added was someone had touched upon the layout of the pumps in relation, relation to the building. This is pretty much the same as the Speedway that's in the southern part of the town. And it works, it works. Okay. It's a little tight down there, but I think that for the most part it works. And if I remember right from that application, we spent a lot of time on the fire suppression system there. And, you know, the looks and, you know, we didn't want it to be just these things hanging down all over the place. So maybe we could all, you know, revisit that and the applicant could maybe take a look at, you know, the Speedway and I think that we were pretty happy with the way that that one had turned out also. So.
Thank you, we will.
Michael, I I guess I have something else. Speaking of Speedway, the new they're not pumps. What are they called? They're not service. Anyway, the new stations that announce the grade and the price of the gasoline that is on the unit cannot have words internally lit. So I just want to caution about the the units that are, are utilized there can't, are are limited as to what kind of messaging can be on them, what kind of digital messaging can occur on those. And if there is a a PA system or a communication system or an announcement system or playing music or any of that, that's also got to be identified on the plan. Thank you.
Brendan, I believe what Ms. Moss was referring to is you can, under our code, you're the actual price. And I think the word cash versus credit can be let, but nothing else can because there's a
No words.
Just, just the prices. There is a request from a fueling station owner to have more or less TV advertising on the pump. Our code would not allow that. That's what Ms. Moss is alluding to. So just make sure that your client understands that.
You guys don't want gas station news. Got it.
No.
Listen, when I go into the city these days, which is rarer and rarer, but it's been the night, as I walk along, every wall surface, I mean, every surface that's a plane is now flashing something at me. Telephone lines, just a telephone pole now has things on it that it's, I feel like I'm in the original Blade Runner. It's kind of a visual assault when you're there. That's just my personal opinion. Sorry. Any rate, Vice Chair Dexter, comment?
I am really happy to see this being, being done. This is great. And you have done a really nice job. And I was racking my brain because we now have had a number. There may not be any gas stations that we haven't redone at this point in Hyde Park. I'm just thinking. But I wanted to know, so you've got me thinking about this your landscaped island there. And from what I can tell, we only have, they they wouldn't allow it at the Deerview Deli. One, they would not allow any trees there. They did not allow any at the mobile at the corner of East Park and nine G. They wouldn't allow that. Can I share my screen?
Yes. You should be able to.
I think, yeah, yeah, I think you need to stop. And it'll just be, it'll be, it'll be brief. Hold on a second. Let's see. So is this it? Let's see if this is it. Can you see this?
Yep.
Yes. So this is the Speedway. I think the, the one in the south of the town. So what we did get from them was a little mini stone wall. And, but they didn't really want us to put trees there either. And I'll just zoom in as much as I can. See how clean it is underneath here and it's that's what they're talking about with all the fire suppression.
Uh, well, they have it down low. They brought it down peninsula is above. I mean, yeah, that that certainly looks like an option. And I can see the suppression canisters are located right on top of those little canopies. That's a look that you would prefer. I I think we can find a way to integrate that.
And then the only other thing I wanted to show was, so this is the one right in town here, right? The Route Nine in Pine Woods. And there's one lone little tree here, I think. But mostly they don't like trees. I think they told us that they become hazardous for people to drive in to, I for, for one of the applications. That's all I remember hearing.
They also don't like when branches go over the roads and fall down.
Yeah, yeah. So I think you've done a really smart job there. And again, I just, our consultants are always just so good at finding, you know, some of the technical details and and my colleagues are usually much better at finding any aesthetic details. So I'm, I'm going to pass the baton to the next person.
I don't think that's actually true. Let me try with our other vice chair, Vice Chair Oliver, comments.
I think this is an awesome improvement to the site. Two hundred percent better than what is there. And I want to especially point out the location of the diesel pump. Owning several pieces of equipment and a diesel vehicle getting to the gas pumps when they're blocked with cars is difficult and maneuvering around them is also difficult with trailers and equipment, et cetera. So I I think that's really great for the site and then that back driving lane should be, you know, really, really nice for larger vehicles and trucks. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I agree. Mr. Garcia? You're muted, John. Sorry.
There we go. Sorry. No real comments. It's a great improvement. Excited to see it happen. That's it.
Thank you. That was easy. Mr. Waters, Rob?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, some of which have Brandon himself had gotten to with, with regarding the canopy, whether that was open air on those shed, you know, on the, on the face of the sheds. But obviously you said it's, I think it's a cement board or fiber cement or something, which is great. That's, that's nice. And that no signage would go up there. That's, that's even better. And then the storefront was mentioned. When you look at the west elevation, it's showing plantings in front of the windows, I believe. But they're not on the plan view. Much like the propane is there, but there is no ice and et cetera. But I was thinking, even if that water table, if the owner doesn't want the water table to go all the way across, like the perimeter, that that could be maybe dropped down and that could be a planting bed in there. But, you know, like a planter in front of that window, but that's, that was just something that I just saw. Then the, let's see, that was the sidewalk. Was six, six foot, six inches. The planning beds, okay. The windows, uh, windows with, with the advertisements and the original structure, they, they have those windows where they're just billboards, I guess, for advertisements and stuff. And by, I guess, the, the the thing that I was mentioning about the windows going all the way down, the storefront windows going down to the grade by putting that water table there to allow him on the inside to possibly put some kind of a, you know, whether it's gum or paper stand or whatever, and it wouldn't be visible from, from the road or anything. So I, I think that could actually enhance the, that, that particular thing. The windows I like, they're six over one. And obviously, if you add the water table, you're actually shortening that window, the visibility out of it. So maybe leaving that open now and not putting molins all the way down might actually you know, be a, it, it actually looks nice. I, you know, I guess is what I'm trying to say. The circulate, I, I can't believe that you got everything that you did into that that acreage. So it's amazing. The circulation is fantastic. I mean, I think it, it, you know, and, and people have commented where the diesel is and all you can go around, you can circulate. There's many ways in and out, and even if you are blocked, there's other ways around. So, so it really, it really works that way. The colors for the structure, I know you probably haven't gotten into it, but you know, at some point, I think we should probably see maybe, you know, some kind of a storyboard or something with the, what the materials are, what colors you're planning on using. The storage center, I believe, is a mustard or a goldenrod color. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. So I, I thought maybe if you balance something that, that might you know, not enhance that, but, but make yours stand out, maybe a darker color, maybe historical color. So, you know, I was looking through the Benjamin Moore Classics Guide and there's a lot of historical colors that are nice, that might go nice with the stone. And then also what kind of stone, what, what is the pattern? You know, obviously here we like to use Roosevelt pattern and the Roosevelt stone. But it depends on the color of the structure too, because you want it to actually work with that. Then the Clappert siding, I get it, you know, the cement board, perfect. That's great. I was just wondering, maybe texturally, just a thought, is if the upper, the, the roof line structures, the doghouse dormers and stuff and the gable might be like a shake. But that was just, that was just a thought, but it looks, it looks, the, the building is a billion times better than what is there. So
I do, I do want to just say that we actually tried a scheme with the shake in it. And I didn't like it as much. It didn't look as clean because I don't feel like there's enough of the dormers.
Right.
To facilitate that shake and that texture. And just to kind of touch on the colors, I know we sort of have sort of this kind of grayish scheme now. The owner was kind of, I think is kind of looking at sort of that gray scheme because it kind of, we have that sort of traditional look, but that kind of gray look is also kind of modern. So he was thinking that looked fresh and new. So he may want to look at those colors. They haven't been solidified yet. I just, that's what we presented tonight and it was something he was thinking of. So he's still open.
Yeah, there's a couple across from Beekman Arms and, and Rhinebeck structures and rugies, I guess. But there's also the, the Amsterdam, the restaurant up there, the Realty Place just south of the Amsterdam Restaurant. It's a little gray building right by the, there's a, I, info center right in between. It's the next building is there. It's a, it's a gray. It has like an amethyst, I think, in it, you know, gray. It's, it's nice. It's different. It's something you wouldn't say. That was one thing. The ridge, the ridge at the top of the roof. I wasn't sure what the length of that is. And, and the only thing I was you know, going to suggest or, or maybe see if it could be done is you're going to have, obviously, a mechanical room, I believe.
Yes.
And there's not, not too many ways to direct vent out the sides because of parking spaces. So, so if you go up, could, is that possible to break up that ridge with, you know, when you, when you do your piping to possibly put like a chimney up there or something, just a low, you know, very low, just to break that line up up on that. So it doesn't look, you know, but again, it's just something to look at. Because I don't know how you're going to vent, you know, any mechanicals and stuff, you know, where they're, where they're located. Are they downstairs? Are they upstairs in the second floor, air conditioning? So that was that. Let's see the, okay, that the pattern of the, the, the stone or whatever, just to kind of keep with what's like on the post office or, or the Roosevelt building, maybe that, that kind of a pattern. And let's see, I think that, I think that was really, that was it. I, I just you know, I was amazed that how much you got into that structure and, and it just changes that whole, I mean, it's going to make everything else look, you know, integrated. So this is very nice.
I mean, we could stick with the free for all traffic pattern. I could get rid of that center. That was one of the biggest issues, at least mine personally with the site. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
Yeah, DOT would not give you a work permit in continue on like that, that, that free for all, as you called it.
No.
Rob, those were very, that was very thorough. And just so you know, I, I've commented your thank you. Say you're going to bring up the rear, so to speak.
It's actually easy to do. I actually just want to reiterate three, three sets of comments in particular. First of all, Brandon, I want to thank you. It was a great presentation. It was so clear and complete in addition to doing a great job in designing, you know, this, this new project. So I thank you for that. I love Rob's ideas, especially, I mean, many good ideas now, but I wrote my note earlier about the water table coming across. You brought that up last week. I thought it was a fabulous idea. I won't even mind it was a touch higher. You know, because you do store stuff on the inside, on the other side, like gallons of antifreeze and all that stuff. We don't want to see. And I also want to just reiterate Ann's comments and photos. And thank you for presenting those photos. I think they're really helpful, looking at the underside of the roof. And that there's a five and a half foot distance between the DOT right away and where the under, the, the USTs are. And I'm wondering if DOT really pushes back completely, if you can fit some low plantings in there. So those are my comments. I just, I'm really excited and just so happy to see this.
Great, thank you. Yeah, well, absolutely. Let, I guess my, my only response to that would be, let's see where the DOT goes, you know, I I didn't really consider the low plantings and even the, the sort of that little landscape wall is something that we may be able to fit in. If we juggle some things around. So, you know, let's see what they come back with and we'll just. If we juggle some things around, so, um, you know, let's see what they come back with and and we'll adjust.
For our newer members, um, Brennan's firm is the one that came up with the. Dunkin' Donuts at the southern end of town on Route nine. And this is the building that. Pete can tell you that other towns started saying. We want the Hyde Park Dunkin' Donuts, and that's to their credit. And I can tell you that on nine D going toward the Duchess Stadium. The day when I was driving by, I went, oh, there's the Hyde Park Donut.
Didn't have to, didn't have to educate Brandon.
I can confirm it because there's a Dunkin' Donuts going in Montgomery, and they said, how about the one in Hyde Park?
This is one of the reasons why we like working with the firm so much, is they understand. Rob, I think that the stone pattern that they're proposing is probably a lot like what's proposed down at. Um, the Dunkin' Donuts on Route nine here in Hyde Park. I know that doing the, uh. Laying the flatter, the bigger stone, uh, flagstone, fieldstone. In the Dutch Colonial Revival that the President FDR, President Roosevelt liked. I think is more expensive, so generally they tend to do value engineering on stuff, so we get a different look. But here I'm going to weigh in and say that I agree, I concur. I think that the building would look more attractive with the water table extended across. All the way and not have those big sort of. Windows, although it didn't look bad to begin with. I I want to make sure I add this. Brendan, the the highest. Uh, light value that I could find on the lighting sheet. Was forty-six. And that's a really high foot candle. I I I'm aware. That this is a dark area and that many people, whether you're female, male, whatever. If you're alone, you might not want to stop there, so I I understand the need for safety, but. Forty-six, according to our Greenway Guide, actually makes people feel uncomfortable by that point because it's just too high. So, uh, I think Bonnie's right, we need, the other thing to tell you too is that. We're supposed to have, well, we clarified it. We need to have an average of the overall side. You broke out the averages of different portions of the side. We should have an average of the foot candle across the side. Because if it's too across the side, then that helps us put higher pinpoints. Those of us who have been doing this for a while know that the LED lights do create pinpoints that are really hotspots, so to speak, but a different kind of hotspot than Beakman. But it dissipates quickly. So. We just want to make sure that it's not overly lit, particularly because it's out in the country and it is more residential. While we don't want to have people like waiting in in the dark shadows for someone to come and shop, and so they can caution over their head. We also don't want it to look like it's Las Vegas out there. We are prepared to take the night, tonight to circulate the action. Uh, type it. Give it to send it to DC Planning as well, because I think it's, it's pretty far along. I mean, this was a really complete package. I also want to thank you and the owner particularly for keeping up his interest. I think we had a discussion about this before, like maybe six months before the COVID lockdown. It's been that long and.
Has been.
After a while, I thought, oh, it'll never happen, boo hoo, and then all of a sudden, we revived again, and it did. And for the rest of the board, this will be, we've now had enhancements, as Ann pointed out, to all the fueling stations. We've had enhancements to all the. Buildings in this area when this is redone, you're gonna have a nice little neighborhood business district down there. I wish there was a neighborhood right around, I mean, immediately there, like a subdivision that we could walk down because. You kind of take your life into your own hands, walking down South Cross Road, as my friend Ann Dexter can tell us, because it's a cow path that curves. But it's, it, this will be a nice place for people to come and shop as well if they need something quick, instead of having to go further afield. So I think for all those reasons, it's great. The other comments I wanted to just highlight. Were, um, I think our code. When I went through all the site plan stuff recently, you're supposed to show on elevations any vents or anything else. And we don't always get that, so when, uh, Rob was talking about adding a chimney or something more attractive. We should at least see where they're going to be to see how visible they are, any venting of your equipment that's up at the top. Hold on, my lighting, sorry. I also think that when you said gray colors, Brendan. I I just looked at my plans. I don't have any color shown. That's why I didn't know what colors there were. You said two-tone, but. You haven't labeled a color for the the shingles or for the side.
Yeah, so we didn't have those in your package. Um, it was only in the presentation I showed tonight that were the elevations colored. But I can certainly make sure that's part of, uh, our next exhibition, so.
I'll be honest, I I couldn't tell. I thought that was just black and white. It's such a, it's such a muted gray that it didn't really pop out to me. The grays that tend to pop out are the ones we see at the new Town Center where it's a dark gray. It has that sort of, um. I'm not being masculine and toxic. It has sort of a masculine feel to be very tailored look. But the colors of the buildings near you, there's maroon. Or at least a dark red for Dr. Howard Minzer's veterinary, uh, business there. And then actually, the storage place is no longer mustard or faded tobacco leaf, Rob. It's actually a dark chocolate. So you have a number of colors that are kind of play off of, but they're both. Darker and richer colors, if that makes any difference as you're going along. But, uh, I had to echo. Basically, what my colleagues have said. Including our consultants, this is a dramatic transformation, and I can't wait. Ever since I used to show me the plans way back when, uh, I think you had to go then back to the sanitary engineer to figure out septic. But you'd already kind of given us a look. I was like, whoa, oh, I can see it happening, and now I can actually see it happening. In my head, like so many nice things have had. I want to thank you. Um, some of the board members know, I think I copied our two vice chairs. There was a discrepancy in the environmental assessment form. One page had one acre of the site and the other had point seven two, and I'm like, you, it didn't grow from six pages down, so. You corrected all the errors that were in there, so we can actually use that to circulate, uh, over to DC Planning. And, uh, otherwise, I'm really happy. I I did, I also started Cat's comment. I don't know what you want to do if you, I do think it's important to not allow. Um, any drivers who are accessing the rear properties to just wander over onto your site because. It doesn't, it's not gonna make it as attractive. But I don't know if you want to go at the expense of putting in a fence or something. Maybe that's where you put in boulders or something as well. Um, but it's it's very speaking your free for all. I drove over there two days ago and. There's multiple ways to get in over there. There's a lot of hard packed paths that don't look like that there's any one way that you're supposed to go in. And part of, part of it is on your property, I could tell, so. Um, or not yours, but your clients, I should say, so. Um, at any rate, we're prepared, as I said, to, with a resolution tonight to get this started, because you can tell we're that excited. And I believe this will be introduced by Board Member Waters.
Whoops, actually, it's me.
But. Is it? Sorry, I didn't look very carefully, sorry.
Right. Doing this and I'm doing this. And I'm trying to. Be very professional here.
Thank you.
The town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution, classifying the action and referring the application to Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. For the Hyde Park Quick Stop Project, Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash ten. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type. One under seeker. Two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent. To all involved and interested agencies, and three, directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. Pursuant to Section two thirty-nine M of the General Municipal Law upon receipt of a revised E A F.
I'll second that, Chris Oliver.
Thank you, both vice chairs. Any further discussion? On favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And just, uh, because we're the the resolutions of the involved and interested agencies for the record are New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Department of Transportation. D C Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, the Hyde Park Resilient Board of Appeal, because they're seeking three variances. And the interested agencies are the town of Hyde Parks Conservation Advisory Council and Roosevelt Fire District. But I think that everyone's gonna be pleased with this, to be honest with you. I I don't know how you wouldn't be.
I hope so.
So, uh, colleagues, do you want to try to set a public hearing on this? I don't think we asked for a lot of new information that's gone through. For that matter. The E A F was already revised. I changed that yesterday, but we already actually, we we don't have the paper packets to circulate yet, but they're going to be in there. So would you like to consider setting a public hearing for the second meeting in April?
I'm fine with that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second you, Oliver.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, it's exciting when we get a new project like this, and and seriously, it is nice to see you guys again.
Oh, it's great to be back. I love it.
Well, do more projects here, do more projects.
I mean, with this level of praise, I mean, how would you not want to come to this board? I mean, geez, thank you so much, everybody.
You're very welcome and. We'll see you in a little bit, or rather, in about six weeks and or five weeks. In the meantime, have a great, uh. Welcome to spring.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
I was going through quickly, the next resolution will be introduced by Mr. Waters. That's right. The next application is Malkarnay. This is a site plan approval, uh, for exterior modification. This is located at forty-two thirty-six Albany Post Road. Long timers will know this as the old road building. Because everything gets called the old something building here, if you've lived here long enough. We're, tonight, we're being represented, uh, by Nivean. Sedaris, uh, of Malkarnay Contracting, and Naveen, can I trade it over to you? There you are. Sorry, I couldn't find it.
Hi, how are you? The building, uh, as it exists, we did not, we're not planning to change anything in the footprint. We're just trying to, eh, improve the look on the outside and give it some height. It's a flat roof at the moment. And we wanted to give it some height to reciprocate to the original brick building that's on the site. And, uh, we're gonna be using it for a showroom because. We don't, we kept. We can't find doctors that want to have offices on their own anymore. So that's, uh, the site as it stands. That's the first sheet. And that's, uh, basically. We're not changing the site. We're just occupying it. And, uh, we want to just, uh. Add a door. For suite. Uh, I. Instead of the two windows, this way we can, um. Use, use that space as well, because these spaces have remained vacant for a very long time. So we want to give it some curb appeal and some new life. That's all we're doing. This is the existing site plan, so. This is the proposed site plan, which is no different, except that the doors are going in in the location. And the parking lot is being striped and, uh, you know. Uh, allocated with with the. Handicap spots and things like that.
And colleagues, there's also, um, Mr. Malkarnay has taken out one parking space. That's the box, as you see shown. Kind of in the center of the south side. To soften up the parking, there'll be some landscaping added. Where you see Malkarnay showroom, there'll be a new roofline, and I think Rob. Waters will probably be talking about that because it's a pretty groovy kind of roofline, in my opinion. In addition, the original brick building that's to the right, the actual part of the row, or rather, to the south. There's a new canopy being added over that as well. I think that pretty much sums it up. Um, you, there is a better version of the elevation. In the lower right-hand side, you can see that sort of hexagonal kind of roofline, I'll call it. Um, there's probably a better term. That's my layman's term for it. Um, but you can see it's gonna have, uh, peaks and valleys in it. In addition, if you look to the, uh, north elevation. Just that they're adding some new cladding to make it a little bit more attractive. If that matter, the whole sites will be upgraded. Slightly to give more curb appeal. Um, and I think what you're achieving, Naveen, by the way, is that. Uh, I like to quote Prince Charles, when we talked about sometimes there are additions to historic buildings being monstrous carbuncles. The addition was originally kind of a carbuncle over there, and by changing the roofline and making it more. A classical, I think you're met, you're harmonizing the two elements much better and the re-cladding as well. In addition, there's new signage. You see it's proposed with four goose neck lights over the the portion of the building to the left, the showroom. That's about all that's changing there, but there is a background, I believe, of red. So introducing some color on this side to harmonize with the red brick on the right side. Does that sound about right, Naveen?
Absolutely.
Uh, I'm, I'm jumping in because I've been working with Naveen on this project for what, uh, eighteen months?
For a while.
To come forward, um, but this will also reactivate a building that's been. Pretty much empty for a while, so I think that you'll probably be hearing nice things about it. Anything else you want to add, Naveen?
I submitted some samples of the treatments we're gonna use on the exterior and the colors. I'm sure that's hard to see right now, but, uh, we're doing, uh. Fiber cement siding, uh, in sheets and with with battens in them. And we're gonna. Carry over the color from the original building, which is the reddish. Color of the stone and the rest will be gray. The signage responds to to that as well. With the same colors, uh, and I submitted this, uh, sample of the sign. Material, and it's gonna be also. Written in the same dark gray and then, um, the the additional. By Malkarnay, the by word would be in the reddish color like the rest of the siding to tie it all together. So I'm hoping it's it's not, uh, too in a, it wouldn't look too invasive, but it would look like it was always there and it would. Tie in together with the original building in a good way.
Thank you. I think it does myself, just putting myself. Um, let me start with the consultants. Mr. Sotero, do you have escrow on this?
Uh, no comments, no.
And Bonnie, do you have escrow on this?
No comments, no.
Thank you. Chad, comments?
No, I think we've gone over this, uh, quite a bit. We're working, you know, to try to get. The integration with the zone, the new zoning district. And I think, I think we're there. But, uh, it's, it's challenging. It's, it's a new district. It's an existing building. It doesn't meet, need to meet the new standards.
Not changing the footprint.
Not changing the footprint, not expanding. So I think we're good to go.
I agree with you, and I I I have to say, I think that the addition of the roofline really does make it. More in line with the architecture that's described in the forums for the new zoning. So, yeah, thank you. So I'm happy with it. So let me get comments from our, uh, my colleagues.
Sure.
Vice Chair Oliver, I'm gonna start with you.
I think the new roofline is pretty cool and unique. I am interested to see the colors, uh, proposed on the building. Um, other than that, I I think it's, you know, anytime we improve an existing structure in the town, I think it's a good thing, so. Uh, thank you for that.
Thanks, Chris. John, Garcia? You're muted still, John.
Um, I don't have anything to add, other than it's exciting to see another old building being fixed up.
On agreement, I'm gonna guess. Ms. Wasser?
Um, same. I'm looking forward to looking at the materials in person. That that will be nice to see the samples in person. I thank you for the investment and, uh. I'm really looking forward to this improvement. It it's really not looking great, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Waters.
Yeah, I I think the roofline is, uh, very, very unique and what what's nice. In in a strange way, it it helps complement. The. Original existing building. And 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 that I think is a, is a plus because, uh, even though. There, it's an add-on, it looks. It's. Unusual enough that it looks like it, it was there and done for, uh, reasons a long time ago, so. It's very nice, uh, looking forward to the colors and seeing. Everything that, you know, all the materials and things. But other than that, it's perfect. It's nice. It's a big upgrade.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Dexter?
Uh, first of all, sorry about the screen sharing. Apparently I've used my allotment of my memory tonight, so. Just sitting there spinning. But this is really exciting. This is yet another one of those. Like, wow, finally, you know, we, some, this, what a great solution and what a great approach. When I moved here. Years ago. That was a, um, that was where the lawn laundromat was. Going way, way, way back. So this has definitely entered into its own, uh, it's, it's just gonna look fabulous. So thank you. And again, I can't wait to see all the actual materials, but. Did the, I think you, uh. I think you said that it's the same colors as Minzer's, uh, that that kind of a red.
Yes, that the sample she dropped off and the samples are in, uh, planning board office. It's the same color as the Hardy board as Minzer's.
Okay, that'll really complement the brick really nice, I think, yeah. So. Nothing else from me.
Thank you.
Naveen, long birthing process, sorry, but we have a baby. It's emerged. You heard positive things. We're gonna help that kid grow and can become a toddler very quickly. So we have a resolution prepared to get this all started tonight, and this will be introduced by Mr. Waters.
Yes, a resolution classifying the action. And referring the application to Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. Malkarnay showroom, Resolution. Two thousand twenty-two dash one-one. Uh, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one. Classifies the project as a type two. now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two under Secra and two directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two hundred and thirty-nine dash M of the general municipal law.
And Stephanie Wasser.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand to say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And sorry, make it a motion to set the, wait, was that in there?
Yes.
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 They were all set. Sorry. Then Naveen will see you in early April.
Okay.
And.
Well, no, did we?
Make the motion for the public.
I didn't think it was in the resolution when I read it.
No, we, I moved that we set a public hearing from Malkarnay showroom for April sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
I second that, Rob Waters.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Sorry about that. I hadn't looked at the resolution since I looked at it yesterday morning, but I didn't think it was in there. So Naveen will see you in early April. In the meantime, have a great few weeks and Cynthia will work with you about getting the packets to send it, well, the packet to send over to DC Planning.
I'm all set. I already have it.
Oh, then we can get it going. Well, I told you that.
Cynthia already.
That baby's gonna be a six-year-old before you know it. So, great.
Well, enjoy your corned beef.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is key construction, office and storage units. I'm recusing this application, but Kelly, good to see you, even though I'm just saying hello there. And Tori, thank you for substituting for me all this time. Thank you again. Somebody just give me a buzz on my cell phone when it's time for you to come back up.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Dupree. Welcome, Kelly. Welcome, Amy. Welcome, Tori. We are not here to open a public hearing because we closed it the last time. And we patiently sat there for seven days and I'll confirm with Cynthia that we did not receive any additional comments. And we didn't, and we hadn't received any anyway, so.
Okay, good.
Yep, so we're good there. I know we've done some back and forth. We do have a resolution tonight. But I just wanted to ask Kelly if you'd like to, you know, just, I don't know, some, do a summation here at the end.
Okay, sure. Thank you for that introduction. So I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning, representing the applicant, and you did a great summary yourself. We've been many months working on this project with the planning board and the zoning board. I think we've addressed all of the comments at this point that the planning board has raised. We've received our area variances. We did amend the phasing plan. I know there were some questions and there was actually some typos on phasing plan, so we did amend that and get that to the town and that'll be included in the final submission set. The same sort of issues that we talked about last time is we're still waiting on DEC, which this is just unprecedented, but not unlike other applications, DOT and the health department. The health department again is relatively easy. We just can't do deep tests. So there's one more deep test that we need to do or per test. And until the frost leaves, which hopefully after this week we're close, we can do that last deep test and hopefully that's finished. DOT is just a process, you know, I'm sure we'll be there soon and DEC, I don't know. So we're doing the best that we can to try to get an answer. But it's, you know, when it's ready, it's ready and will be finished. So with that, there's nothing else I think that we have that's outstanding. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, and we're hearing you unilaterally now that every application that needs anything from the DEC is experiencing. I think the term you use is perfect, unprecedented delays in a process that needs a thirty-day turnaround.
Yes.
It's taking three hundred days, so it's just.
It's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. So and our resolution does address, you know, the fact that if any of these things require any kind of site plan amendment, that, you know, we'll just bring it back and pick it up.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
I'm just gonna go around the horn and Pete?
No, I don't have any comments, Ann. I think that, you know, we're all set to go.
Great, thank you. Ms. Franzen?
No comments. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Tad?
The applicant turned around and corrected the typo very quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. And I'll just go through my colleagues here. Ms. Wasser?
No comments. Looking forward to it, you know, starting.
Great. Mr. Waters?
No comments.
Mr. Gercio?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
And Ms. Kane?
No comments.
Thank you again for, for standing in and this was a great application to see from start to finish, so. So if there are no more comments, we do have a resolution prepared.
Right.
And let me pull it up here and I believe, I believe Ms. Kane is going to read that. Let me find it first. Hold on, it's here somewhere. Here it is. There we go.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, so resolutions and grants, site plan approval. One, two, three, four, Route nine G for key construction dated March first, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan approval to the project and authorizes the chair or his authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow, final review of the site plan set by the town engineer and zoning administrator. All LED lighting shall be a maximum of three thousand Kelvin. Approval of methods of water supply and wastewater disposal from Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. The site plan shall be revised to comply with any conditions of said approval. Issuance of a permit from the New York State DEC for encroachment into the hundred-foot adjacent area, the site plan shall be revised to comply with any conditions of said approval. Issuance of a permit from New York State DOT for approval of the driveway entrance. The site plan shall be revised to comply with any conditions of said approval. Approval of stormwater pollution prevention plan and stormwater management permit by the town engineer and stormwater management office. Revision of site plan set as follows. Update the wetland boundaries on the site plan to be consistent with the validation map. Be it further resolved that should the issuances of any permits set forth above necessitate revisions to the site plan site, the zoning administrator may refer the site plan back to the planning board for review and approval. Be it further resolved that prior to zoning administrator authorization of building permit, the, excuse me, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed site plan set.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you.
Gercio.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion?
I'll be changing the date, the date to the sixteenth, that's all.
Thank you. I was wondering about that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 As is unanimously. Kelly and Amy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I hope.
It's always a pleasure to deal with. You really are. I've been with you guys for many, many, many years and it always is a pleasure. So thank you very much. I guess we'll probably see you in person next month.
Sounds good.
All right.
Good night.
Right, just texted, there he is.
Veracles and modern technology for communication.
Good night, guys.
Congratulations, board. I didn't hear any of that, but I know that it was an approval, so delighted because it's gonna be a great project, I think, to where it's going in particular, back there at the old nine G drive-in. The next application is an extension of time which to meet conditions for signature or approval. This is for Dollar General located at one East Dorsey. Ms. Maginowski is here tonight. I explained to her that I believe we all know what the problem is. And that is that they discovered that there's polluted water. It's gonna require backwashing and filtering. That their subject capacity isn't exactly tailored to that, so they're still working with Department of Behavioral and Community Health on this. Karen, do you want to add anything?
Everyone, nice to see you. Thanks again for the time this evening. I think that sums it up pretty much perfectly. Less than ideal water quality, but we'll get through it and we'll have one of the fanciest water treatment systems you've ever seen.
Oy, oy. Please, please thank your clients for their continued interest in doing this project. When, when I first heard from Pete, what was encountered, I thought, oh, no, this is gonna sink it forever and it hasn't. So thank them.
Thank you. I'll pass.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions of Karen or of me? And I believe the resolution is prepared and it's gonna be moved by Mr. Gercio tonight.
Yes, I moved a vote on.
There we go.
Did you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. Sorry, I'm reading. Where resolution to grant extension of site plan approval dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four one. Whereas on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, by resolution two thousand nineteen oh four H, the planning board granted conditional site approval for HCS Hyde Park LLC to demolish an existing building and construct a new seventy-five-hundred-square-foot retail building along with new access, parking, landscaping, lighting, utilities, stormwater management at property located in one East Dorsey Lane, tax parcel six-one-six-three dash zero-two-five-zero-four-six-three-three in the neighborhood business district. Whereas 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a ninety-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval to and including July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second by Rob Waters.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Karen, good to see you. Good luck.
Thank you, as always. Thank you. Moving right along.
It's like a nightmare over there. Just everything pops up differently. So we appreciate it again that you came here tonight.
Go through it. Thank you.
Peter, principal.
Yes. If it can go wrong, it will. The next application is Phantom Fireworks. This is something that for anybody watching, we do every year. We actually really appreciate the fact that the Phantom Fireworks people do this well in advance of when they're going to set this up. And this is located, the fireworks stand is located at the side of, I think it's party time, Mr. Van Valkenburg's site, where there's also now Mona Lisa Wings and Darby O'Gills. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, Vice Chair Oliver gets to read this one.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero-eight, whereas a request for site plan waiver as made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Vincent Vincent Zabo Phantom Fireworks Eastern Regional LLC on March second, two thousand twenty-two, for approvals as required to establish temporary sales venue for sparkling devices. And whereas 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 therefore be it resolved that town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed was temporary changes submitted on February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two and on drawings for, for as submitted. And that request is incorporated into the record.
Second, and Dexter?
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Chris, were you taking a leaf out of my book? You spoke that so quickly. That was pretty darn good. I gotta say.
I was, it was a short one.
The next item on the agenda is sort of a funny situation. For those who don't know, but I'll explain it. We set a public hearing for April sixth for the Thompson accessory apartment. In the subsequent response we got back from the Department of Health, it indicated there would be more problems. And then in addition, Mr. Freeman saw that the ZBA had denied the two-family or the accessory unit recently in another neighborhood. So he wanted to wait before we set the public hearing to get a feel for the ZBA and he wanted to talk to Department of Health. So he asked that we not try to open the public hearing and then just keep it open and extending it as April sixth. So we just need to rescind it as of tonight. And I believe that Ms. Dexter, you might be making that motion, I hope.
I would. I would make the motion to rescind the motion to set the public hearing for the Thompson accessory apartment that was set for April sixth, twenty-two, twenty-two on March second.
I'll second that, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? There being none, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye, please.
Aye.
Motion carries successfully. And that's, Bonnie and Peter still here. You stayed to the bitter end.
Yes.
Thank you.
What a team.
For a tournament. Anybody have any issue? Well, I do have one thing to say. We just got a text from Victoria indicating that she heard the governor extended the deadline to meet virtually through April sixteenth.
Wow. So what are we doing? Are we?
Well, well. I'm gonna, we have an option. We could meet by Zoom still, but I'm gonna send out a little doodle poll and see what everybody wants to do. If you want to meet back, I mean, it's just one more meeting. So it wouldn't extend past this, well, rephrase that, I'm reading after the sixth. It would not be covered unless she extended it again. So it's up to everybody else, but think on it tonight. And we have to wait and see if that's true. Hearing something and I, she, normally I would see something, I think, by email come across. I haven't seen anything yet like that. So at any rate, make it a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. And Dexter?
I'll second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your patience. This is a long. Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.